Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Board of Supervisors meeting for Thursday, August 1st. Please stand before the plate.
I have opinions to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a prayer.
Heavenly Father, I thank you for all gathered this evening in support of our community. Let us bring everyone together and stop the enemy's work of dividing us. The Lord brought you over us all. Thank you for our first responders and our emergency services. Thank you for our township staff and everyone here present. Let us all have a safe travels home. Your heavenly name be praised.
This meeting is being recorded for re-locked past purposes. There is no executive session. Is that open? Public comment and final person limit for comment on agenda items only. Please come forward, state your name for the meeting minutes. Okay, see you in a moment. We'll go down to presentations, transfer development rights and letter A.
Thank you. Quick presentation on transfer development rights. Everybody in the room is familiar with that word. Can't think of too many municipalities that like development. And at our last meeting, I had a resident from Denver, Colorado, who stood up and said, "I moved here because it's a great place to be and I like the way it is. And listen to everything we can to prevent development from changing." And it's a sentiment you often hear at municipal meetings. Can't count the number of times I've heard that over the years. And I understand the sentiment. It's genuine. But at day's end, there's not too much we can do to say absolutely no more development. There isn't. Municipalities have to provide for every use, every legal use, somewhere within their borders. They provide for every type of housing to their fair share. And the best we can do is zone appropriately and then make sure our standards for development are high. But that's understanding when somebody submits a plan to us that meets our zoning requirements, they're entitled to an approval. Saying no just isn't an option. So what can we do if we want to curb or control or create better development in our community? Well, some municipalities do that. They buy the ground. They buy the ground. They borrow money and buy the ground. Solbury Township in Bucks County has gone out to a public referendum five times and they've borrowed a total of $56 million. And today, 40% of the municipality is preserved because the voters said, "Let's borrow $56 million." Now, that works for Solbury, but it doesn't work for most other municipalities because of the effect it would have on our debt and on taxes. So buying is always an option, but it's not a practical option for most. And I don't believe it's a practical option for us as well, at least not at that level. So what most municipalities do in place of buying everything is, well, they plan better. They zone better. They make sure their regulations are tough and they make sure they produce a quality development. Cluster developments that use less ground and provide more open space, better standards, making sure that natural resources are protected. So if we're going to have to accept development, we want to make sure it works well and reflects our community. And wherever possible, wherever possible, we should find ways to encourage folks to preserve ground. In addition to controlling growth and making sure it works for our community, we have to make sure our toolbox is filled with whatever we can provide folks to use to encourage to preserve ground. And one of those tools can be transfer development rights. So in a nutshell, transfer development rights will transfer the right to develop ground from areas a municipality wants to preserve to areas a municipality wants to develop. So commonly, a municipality with a transfer development right program will allow folks who live in the more rural areas where there's not adequate infrastructure, you know, less traveled roads, no water, public water, no public sewer, to preserve those areas and build where you want things to be built. So you are looking at most often preserving places like this and allowing property owners to sell their development rights to people who are willing to build where building is already happening. That's it in a nutshell. You're giving property owners the ability to say, "I'll preserve my property. I'll sell my development rights to somebody else who wants to build in an area that the municipality says, 'Yeah, this is better suited for building.'" So what does that mean? How do you develop this program? Well, first you have to set sending criteria and receiving criteria. And by that I mean a governing body thinks about the areas of the municipality it wants to encourage preservation. And then think about the areas of the municipality in which it is okay to allow more growth. Now, it can be a zoning district or it could be a criteria based on the type of land. So for example, sending criteria might be parcels that are over 100 acres or parcels that contain certain soils suitable for farming or parcels that abut other open space. So we can develop a longer stretch of open space. And then the receiving criteria can be zoning districts or they can be certain areas. They can be limited industrial district, heavy industrial district, commercial district, districts that provide high density residential, or even quarters along major roads. That's the first step. The second step is calculating the number of dwelling units for eligible properties that they could sell, property owner could sell to a developer. And you base that on zoning and that gives the property owner the ability to sell his or her development rights and doing so preserve their ground. After that, it is a private negotiation. It is between the buyer and the seller. Township isn't involved in that negotiation. The market sets the price. And if the deal happens, if the property owner sells the development rights to a developer and the developer is able to get a plan approved to build using those development rights, with that plan approval comes the recognition of a conservation easement on the property preserved. It's something to consider here because I think it meshes well with the philosophy of our community. First and foremost, this is voluntary. There is no mandate here. There's no government mandate. If a property owner wants to pursue this, if a developer wants to pursue this, it's up to them entirely. Some municipalities are really heavy handed with regulations. We're not like that. Wherever possible, we like to have folks pick and choose what works best for them. And this is a great example. A second benefit is that it's another option. When we rezone property, we're taking away one zone and adding another. Here, this is just another option for property owners. If a property owner wants to develop under the existing zoning today, they can do so tomorrow. But this is just another option. And I say times two here because it's not only another option for the folks that want to preserve their land and sell the development rights, it's another option for the people who own the land in places you want to see development. So it benefits both the buyer and the seller. You have two really happy property owners when these deals are done. As we discussed, the market sets the value. It's not the township. It's the market. And unlike what they do in Solbury, there's no massive debt at day's end. There's no massive debt. What the township gets out of it is preserved land and approximately the same number of dwelling units just in another part of town. Part of town that has adequate infrastructure, adequate roads, adequate water, adequate sewer. And the beautiful landscapes that we have today, some of those can be preserved for this. And lastly, one of the benefits here, there's no downside. What we're doing if we pursue this is adopting an ordinance that's in our code for somebody to use if they choose to do it. If nobody chooses to do it, the cost to create a program is just the cost to prepare the ordinance. And that's it. But if one or two or three property owners decide, "You know what? This might work for me and my family." It could be a really neat way to save a few hundred acres of ground without the expense of buying it. So I invited to tonight's meeting a representative from the Lancaster Farm Trust. And his name is Jeb Moser. And Jeb sent the municipality a letter in April of this year introducing himself and saying, "Hey, we do lots of things here at the Lancaster County Farm Trust. And if you want to talk about some of the programs that we offer, some of the initiatives we support, transfer development rights is one of them, why don't you come on in and we'll talk for a bit?" So with that, if the board has any questions for me or for Jeb, I'd be glad to discuss if the board is interested in next steps here.
Well, I guess with Jeb representing the Farm Land Trust, you know, I'm aware of some property owners that are concerned about possibility of preservation, conservation easement. And, you know, I'm familiar a little bit with what the county preserve board does, but not all the ins and outs of the trust. So, you know, that leads me to multiple questions about, not necessarily TDRs, but what your program looks like for conservation easement. Small details of that.
Yes, you may have a lot of ideas. I'm Jeb Moser of Lancaster Farm Land Trust. So I'd say typically the primary difference most folks take when they think of the two organizations doing farm land preservation in Lancaster County, Lancaster County Ag Reserve Board and Lancaster Farm Land Trust. County Ag Reserve Board being the county state government program, mostly public dollars. We use that, not really public dollars, we use that program. Lancaster Farm Land Trust, mostly private dollars, some public dollars mixed in with our programs. That's sort of the backdrop. The restrictions, at the end of the day, you have a preserved farm. But to your point, the restrictions are slightly different whether you go with the Ag Reserve Board versus Lancaster Farm Land Trust. Typically, some key points would be, we are typically a little bit more flexible when it comes to subdivision. The Ag Reserve Board, for example, to have a farm subdivision, you need to have at least 150 acres of original parcel size when you apply their firm in order to be able to subdivide that to another farm. We're a little bit more flexible with that. Usually we were allowed for an ag subdivision around 75 acres or something like that. So that's one key point. Sideline businesses, on farm businesses, another key distinction. We both allow for them, but in slightly different ways. County Ag Board typically allows for on farm businesses, they need existing buildings and there's a certain size limitation. Well, we don't necessarily place a limitation on whether it's a new building or existing building. And we basically have a building envelope where it's got to be located, but we don't place essentially specific on size limitation. So there's just a, and there's a whole host of sort of other details like that. But at the end of the day, you know, I think we both, you know, about 80, 85% of our easement portfolio is our plains edge farmers. So or our conserves, mountainous farmers. That tends to be the type of farm that's more attractive to our program. With farming source, but also because it tends to be usually smaller farm size in that community. And then, you know, other farms might be a better fit where County Ag Reserve Board, certainly not exclusive, but that's just the trend that we see. In a case of a TDR ordinance, there are a handful of townships in Lancaster County that have a TDR or components to their ordinance. They all function slightly different from one another. Township like Mannheim Township, my understanding these days is they pretty much function somewhat similar to what Tommy presented where they would direct developers to go directly to the owner to negotiate on the first TDRs. While you have a case like Warwick Township where if we go into Warwick Township or the County Ag Reserve Board goes into Warwick Township and we preserve a farm, even separate from maybe any development project that might be occurring in the township, we would go into preserve farm. In every case, we're going to be severing TDRs on that farm and we do what's called bank those TDRs. So they would come to either LFT or in the case of a county transaction, they would actually go to township and be held at township. And then when the development project that warrants the purchase of TDRs comes into that particular township, the developer would then purchase those TDRs either from the land trust or from the township, which then would go into pot light to reserve additional land in the future. So it can function that way.
How do you determine the validation?
Value? I think there's, that's when you have to bring an appraiser into the mix. And there's a unique type of appraisal when it comes to appraising TDRs, but yeah, you need to use an appraiser that'll help value that. And at Carper Township out in the eastern side of the county, they also have TDRs. To date, they banked a lot of TDRs. Lancaster Farm Land Trust and the township have a lot of TDRs that are held. They haven't successfully been, at least today, been able to actually have anybody use any of those TDRs. So there's a lot banked, but they really have, and the hope is someday in the future that there's a good sending area established for that, but.
So why are you going to keep TDRs?
Transferable development, right? Yeah. So basically taking the development right from the ag or rural or maybe natural area and transferring from there, sending to the more developed area, like residential.
And as Tommy said, the township would define what a TDR means in eastern county and township.
Right.
So in Mannheim Township, a TDR means an increased number of dwelling units. In Warwick Township, it means an increased size of commercial industrial space in their industrial, in their commercial something, something, something.
But in any state, I think a key point to take note with all this is there's got to be, with my understanding, there's got to be that restrictive development piece. So there's got to be that declaration of restriction of development or conservation easement that's held by one trust or township or some combination of that. So or the county act would be an option.
And that would be in the form of another development document that would be processed by the township at the time the plan is approved and then recorded with the plan.
So that would happen during the entitlement process. And normally it's undertaken by the developer on behalf of property owner. The agreement between the two could bear. So it's another development agreement that has to be approved before a plan's recorded.
So can a TDR be considered, like Matt was saying, some was commercial, some was for dwelling units? Over there, there's specifically one for the other. It could be here, if we were to do it, we could do it for one or the other or none at all or for both, right?
You do one or the other or?
Sure.
Or none. You also work, I guess, with tax credits with purchasing an easement too? Different than what the Ag Reserve Board would do or?
Well, so I think what you might be referring to is there's a, if, when granting a conservation easement, and I don't quote me on this, not in county, I'm asking for it, but when granting any sort of conservation restriction on a property, like an easement, I imagine a declaration of restriction would take a similar form if you're limiting a property to certain conservation values. If you're, if what the landlord is being compensated for is less than what the fair market value is of that conservation easement, that what they're not compensated for is seen as a charitable contribution in the eyes of the IRS in the form of uncompensated lost property value, basically, that is not eligible for a federal income tax deduction for a roof in course of 15 years. So that all depends on appraisal minus what they're paying now, basically, is that charitable piece.
An appraisal is general market value or?
They're going to look at usually, you know, comparable sales between similar properties that are similar in all other criteria and they're going to kind of take, you know, for each, say, several that are not for you or see what those are bringing and then sort of six on that offer or see what those are bringing and that's how they determine that for an after value.
The differential between the two?
Yeah.
Okay. I had a resident tell me that there was, when preserving with the trust, that there's a few more restrictions about flood plain, grazing, that kind of thing that is not there with the preserve board.
Yeah, that's relatively true and recent. So you must maybe even talk to a recent, a recent conversation we had. So that Lancaster Farm Land Trust, our board within the past year has adopted a policy that at bare minimum, we want to see livestock exclusion that's in front of the street.
Well, are you talking extreme bank? Are you talking flood plain too?
We're talking, our policy is we don't care how far back it's set. We just, it can be set back as far as you want, but it's got to be at least top of the bank.
Well, there's similarities there.
Yeah.
What a conservation plan would be.
Yeah.
You know, it was trying to give facts versus myth.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think it's an interesting program just by looking at it or hearing about it for the first time. Our zoning map was done in 2003, I think it was.
The last rezoning.
The last rezoning map of the whole township that's right there.
Yeah, it was.
Evaluation. I know this board has already talked about in the past about sending it off to our planning commission to kind of talk about zoning in the township. Because by looking at it and hearing people in the community, everyone's not, let's say, okay with how everything got zoned two decades ago. But then I've talked to certain people that have to them a big value in property and they say, "That's my family's future." And for example, if my property is a light industrial property and you come and try to rezonate to agriculture, as you know, the value goes from here to here. And there's people that have been banking on the price up here the whole time. But something like this comes into play. If the majority of the family really wants to preserve that farm, they could maybe talk to a developer and say, "Hey, we'll sell you our TD, you know, we'll talk about TDRs that from my farm and you can maybe build it in this zone where there's other light industrial and we'll preserve ours." So that's where I see that this could potentially work. There's a lot of those properties around the township. And it'd be, at the end of the day, it wouldn't be costing us anything other than writing up an ordinance, which the manager does, right? But we're going to start running into this a lot. We've already seen it. You know, there's properties in the vicinity here that are, like Tommy had said, there's properties already zoned in a certain way that were done in 2003 that people don't want to see built on. We can't stop it. The only way we can stop it is if they're, if it's residential and they say, "Hey, I want to put a warehouse there." We can stop it because we won't rezonate or we will rezonate. It all depends on the board. But if it's residential and you come in and say, "I want to put houses there," we can't say no. We will get sued and we will lose. Matt, right?
I would say adopting ordinance or inviting somebody to come and comply.
So having a TDR program, again, this is the first I'm hearing about it. I'd like to hear more about it because I think there's a value here. And again, maybe we should talk about getting a quote because I've never heard a true number on what it would cost to reevaluate all the zoning in East Coe-Cowco Township. I know it's going to be a big number. And I know a lot of people are going to be like, "Oh, you guys are going to blow over $100,000 or it could be 50, it could be 10,000." I don't know. It's a big question mark. I've never done it before. But all the feedback I'm getting is people don't want to see anything else happen in the township. And I'm here to represent the people. So if that's the route we want to go, let's see how much it's going to cost if that's, if the board decides that. And let's get our, you know, let's reevaluate the whole situation in the township. And instead of being done two decades ago, we can update it in 2025 or, you know, whenever it can get done, if that's the route we want to go. But if not, as we all know, there's a lot of interest in East Coe-Cowco Township. Matter of fact, we just got something else straight. There's another plan that just came in today.
Eleven this year.
There's a lot of people that want to be in East Coe-Cowco Township. And if the zoning is zoned for it, we can't say no. There's just no way around to it.
The other thing to note is municipalities are at disadvantage in trying to acquire open space through purchase or easements because we are limited to the amount we can pay to increase value. Folks like Paul Brothers, there's no ceiling. So we're at a disadvantage. We're playing card by card, poker to free cards sometimes. Which is why the option to have a developer and a property owner kind of levels that playing field. At day's end, we get what we want, which is preserve open space. And at day's end, the buyer gets what he or she wants, which is more money.
You know, Harrison pointed out, the dozen of municipalities we represent, you are my farm, the busiest in land development by a factor of five. Most of my municipalities have not had a major plan. I would describe that as a 20 block subdivision or larger in the last five years. Those that do get them, get one or two in the course of a year. We have 11 here. That's just this year.
And the year ain't over yet.
We have 27 active right now.
So getting back to just the direct easement purchase, you know, are you, do you have a priority waiting list sitting there currently where you don't have funds for it?
Yeah, collectively, well, I'll say Lancaster Farm Land Trust, we've been hovering around basic farms on our waiting list for the past six, seven years, I'd say. And we've been preserving about 20 to 25 farms a year. So we're basically preserving the farms at the same pace that people are planning our program. The County Ag Reserve Board, I think that's about 160 on their waiting list. Some of those might be on those waiting lists, but probably not. So somewhere around 200 farms in the county waiting list. There's about 5,000 farms in Lancaster County. About 25% of all of the ag zoned and in Lancaster County is already preserved. I think we have one farm to the front by our reserve bracket. We have one farm probably on our waiting list in East Coe-Cowco. Not sure about the Ag Reserve Board.
How do you prioritize them similar to what the reserve board does or?
Similar in most ways with the exception. Similar in most ways, with the, with the exception being that we get a little bit more points in our system to a farm that's right up against, let's say, a commercial zone, or a dead bird, or a townhouse, something like that. We have a farm that's in the ag zone, but it's right up against residential zones, something like that, they actually would get more points in our system as opposed to where it's further away from development, it's our way of, uh, awarding more points for property under greater threat.
Easier to extend developmental services into an adjacent property than one full contract anywhere.
Yeah, yeah, reserve board has a slightly different school of thought on that. Their thought is to not award very many points at all for this property right up against grid tax, because their thinking, and it's certainly valid way of thinking, is that if you're that farm, then developments just go in from that farm. So there's sort of, it's a small percent, but small, in the grand scheme of things, we're mostly looking at soil types, size of property, where the farm is, things like that, you know. With soils getting the highest amount of points in both our branch system, you know, we're looking at high quality.
What's the advantage from their program here, so like, why go with you guys versus them?
So I'd say typically, with the ag reserve board program, if it's a, if it's a farm that scores well in both systems, you're gonna be, the farmer's gonna get paid more with the ag reserve board. They pay based off of that appraised value. So whatever the appraiser says, if they, if you meet their funding thresholds in any given year, they will pay that full appraised value, which on average in Lancaster County for a conservation easement is about thirty-seven, thirty-eight hundred dollars per acre. That's that, the forward value minus the active value. We pay, we don't pay based off of the appraiser, we pay based off of that scoring system I talked about. So if a property scores nine or above, they qualify to our top payment of two thousand dollars per acre. So if a farm doesn't score well in the ag reserve board system for a particular reason, or they're not comfortable with their restrictions versus ours, like, especially with subdivision and all farm business and this sort of things, they might draft a, to our program, be willing to take a lesser purchase price, maybe the taxes, maybe the tax deduction is important to them. Some of those things will, maybe we could move the project a little quicker, there's lots of things that they might consider. In this particular case, it sounds like, uh, the negotiation of price would be really between the developer and the property owners. This is more a scenario where even if TDRs don't, wouldn't get pursued, if it still hasn't been operated for thirty years, LFT and the ag reserve board coming in, basic county township, they have preserved farms like the app did, that's how this was, that's how that stayed on operating.
It would just be another option.
Exactly.
Now, would it be, would it be who wants to add both options or not?
I think you give folks as many options as possible, that way.
So the, the, the ag preserve board and the Lancaster Farmland Trust option already exists. It's just a matter of us looking at what the ag security zones are, because you still require the property to be in an ag security zone before you would consider.
Yeah, the ag preserve board, that's a prerequisite, because there may fall under the ag security area law, so you gotta be an ag security. LFT is not a hard line requirement, that was, our board looks at it as one of the criteria when they're deciding, but it's not at scale.
Oh, the county, it's hard to tell.
I'm sure, yeah.
So.
What I had seen in the past is the preserve board likes to bundle preserved farms. There's others next door, close by, they, they prioritize trying to get one adjacent to that one.
Yeah.
And that adds to the score too. And, you know, with, with us, with several areas of preserved farms, that, you know, this, this could be, you know, a beneficial way to look at things in couple different areas of our township. So, yeah. You said one of the leading, leading factors in your decision process was dirt. I mean, you hear a lot about dirt in some of our decisions in the last, you know, few months either. Do you have a, do you have a map of, now maybe it's not easy, do you have a map of soil samples of where, where the good dirt is in our town, even if we could go down to our township level?
Yeah.
Where the good soils are, not bad, but less than optimal soils are, do you have a map like that of our township, by any chance?
Uh, we, we'd be, you see, to make one. We, we have, we have soils data that we use from, you know, Department of Ag, their Natural Resources Conservation Service, they do, they did a soil survey in every county. Lancaster County's got soil survey, and Lancaster County's got a lot of class one, class two soils. This area of county's got a little bit less class one, class two soils, there's a little bit more class three and four soils. If you go to any, about anywhere else in Pennsylvania, they would be jumping up and down for joy if they had class three and four soils. So it's just something that's like, Lancaster County's very, when we're saying, oh, it's just class three and four soils, there's just sort of a good soil. So, but yes, to answer your question directly, so that map to you.
That's why I kind of run a little bit, when you said the price of commercial property versus farmland, I would say that that is getting a little bit more balanced. And as we start to see more and more farmland lost, farmland is gonna be worth more than anything.
Can't make more.
You can't make anymore, it's simply, it's not making anymore. So I would, I would certainly be interested in seeing those, you know, how the soils are. I know that some of the, some of the farms in here, the leasing ground, it's between four to six hundred dollars an acre to lease in Lancaster County. Whereas other counties, like you're talking about, it's fifty bucks an acre and to lease. So it's obvious our soils are here, and we have a responsibility to maintain our main, you know, food and water. And so I'd like to see those soil samples, and then I'd also like to discuss more about looking at the zoning in our township further, and seeing the cost of what that would be to look at a comprehensive plan there. But thank you for, uh, if you could get a soil, a soil sample, so that, not soil sample, but that battle. Thank you.
Sure.
Any, any questions from the public? Yes, sir.
Doug Mackler, uh, excuse me, TDR, I'm not, I'm familiar with them. My question is to the board, it sounds like a way of circumventing the zoning. I own a hundred acres out here outside of Rimson, if I would, and it's not agricultural, it's not rural residential, it's something else. And this gentleman comes to me, wants to buy the rights, but he wants to put something else in there. Basically, what we're saying is you're transferring those rights, is that correct?
No.
You're transferring a zone, is that correct?
No.
So how's the zoning, the zoning map's gonna be changing all the time.
No. What? The answer was no, did you hear the answer?
So you're gonna put an ag place in the middle of a rural residential resource?
No.
No.
So it's gonna be zoned, then, in other words, it's gotta be apples for apples, is that correct? Help me out, I'm asking a question.
The development right is based on the zone in which the property is located.
Okay.
I'll give you an example, let's say there's a zoning district that allows one acre zoning for single-family detached homes.
Okay.
And you have a parcel that is one hundred acres.
Okay.
Just simple math, a hundred homes could be built on that property under the current zone.
Okay.
And the TDR allows those rights to be severed from the ground, that hundred acres to be preserved. And instead of the hundred homes being built on the one hundred acre farm that you wanna preserve, those homes can be built at another location in the township that allows for homes.
Okay, so, all right, all right, I, I understand, you're getting, you're putting the homes where they're supposed to be, or the business, I should say.
You're putting the homes where the government body would be okay with.
They're allowed.
Correct, yeah.
So let me, let me take his thought one step further, because I'm, I'm just a little confused there too. So the person that would buy the development rights, what, what does that give them for this, this other property they want to develop?
The ability to do more at that property.
As, as you, as you would define it.
As you would define it.
To increase densities.
Or, or height? Or tight, or tight, yeah.
There's a multitude of things to, to that point, you could, you could, if someone wants to build more density, what the zoning ordinance allows for, that is, as I said, you might say, ten you gotta purchase. Some towns just even flip that on its head and, and zone to say, you have to build at least this dense, and if you don't build at least that dense, then you have to purchase TDRs, that apples not as frequently, but it's basically a way to do something above and beyond, maybe what the zoning.
And even for ag zoning land, you know, the zoning ordinance permits some subdivision. It might be one, two, three building lots, it might not be a hundred units, but those one, two, three development rates could be monetized and sold, and you've preserved to a little extent that farm from subdividing off three lots along its frontage. And those lots could be, you know, maximum two acres, but nevertheless, you're still taking farmland in small pieces or large pieces. Every farm has at least one subdivision ready to attach to it if they haven't used it already.
To that point, you know, at one time, there was an ordinance there that ag zoned land were allowed one building unit per twenty-five acres in, in this township. And I, I think it's the same, but don't hold me to that. So that would help eliminate some of that, that would be a good spot. It, it could be ag zoned land currently that, that oozes that building.
And I can tell you, in my experience, that is the most stringently enforced requirement in our county. I've gotten a variance for one additional subdivision that only once, and it was in West Calico, because they wanted us to improve an intersection. And the trade-off of that intersection land was one of the, right, and so in forty-five years, I can say, I've gotten approval for an additional subdivision that I only once. Yes, sir.
So just, again, Doug Mackler, just picking up on what Matt said. You're, what you suggested or what you said, now you suggested, you said it. If you build, if, if the transfer of the local rights went into an area where each, each house have, have an acre built. You said we could, the person could be allowed to build less, and I, did I say that right?
No, I'm talking about the sending property would have, say, one development right, and we would define what that is. A developer purchases it to transfer it to, what's our highest density zone, R three? To an R three zone. A two zone, we would define what the quote-unquote value of that right is in the R three zone. Does it allow one additional unit per acre, one additional unit per draw? We're talking theoretically here, because we get to define what the sending and the receiving value is in development.
And, and don't get me wrong, I'm not against this, we talked about this when I was on the board, and we had a gentleman, business owner in this township, who wanted to buy the land across the street and get us to change the zoning. And we said, that's fine, but you gotta go find land somewhere else to match that, and the deal fell through, because it wasn't gonna happen, he couldn't do it, couldn't find the land. And who it was, it doesn't matter, but I still say in my mind, I guess I've been in too long, you're gonna have a map that's just hodgepodge all over the place, because you're, if you wanna build an R two, you gotta go in the R three area. Correct?
Correct.
You can't take an R one and put it in an R three, you wouldn't do that, but you couldn't do it.
How many ordinances are lies to allow those rights to attach to the properties that you want to develop?
But again, you're gonna have a map here that, right now, there's defined areas, whether they're right or wrong, they're defined.
It doesn't have, it doesn't have to contain the zoning districts. It, it could have nothing to do with zoning districts.
But it has.
Government body can say, to be eligible for this, you need to be at least one hundred acres, you need to have decent soil, and you need to be within so many feet of other potential lands. The amount of zoning district is. Property props the street from us to zone commercial.
Right, well, it didn't used to be, but like, I mean, not.
It's owned commercial, but anyhow.
All right.
The other.
Yeah, I'm pointing this one, yeah.
I, I, I think if you restrict sending areas to zoning districts, you might miss the opportunity to find a really good piece of ground that just happens to be zoned something else.
And again, I'm not against it, I just think it's a great idea, because you do need more thought put into this, because once you sign that line, it's done, it's a done deal. And I know we keep talking about the twenty thou, two thousand and three, yeah, it's old, there's no doubt about it, but at that time, it was a, we didn't have anything, so we worked our tails off to get done what was done. Was it a hundred percent right? I'm not gonna sit here and tell you that, no, it isn't, you're never gonna make your everybody happy, it's impossible. I'm just suggesting that before you throw both feet in the fire, pull one at a time, and I'm not against what you're saying, believe me, I'm not, but it's a long thought-out process. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for coming.
All right, move it on, let her be, Zimmerman rezoned twenty twenty-four dash year of two.
Good evening.
We're Swarfield Acre Law Associates with Mr. Roy Zimmerman and White Zimmerman.
Roy is the landlord. We had met with you briefly on, at your meeting in June, and talked, we had made a request to have a portion of land that Mr. Zimmerman owns on Line Road rezoned from its presently zoned R three, with the traditional neighborhood, to be rezoned R two. We had presented a plan years ago here. Plan was for the development of the traditional neighborhood design. This is eighty, I think we have copies of these perhaps, yes, these are eighty, there are eighty units. Under that design requirement, there was a mixture of unit types, including single families, duplexes, and townhouses. There was a proposal for a road that would be designed and was designed to meet the township standards for dedication, and then there were alleys to serve the units, which is part of the traditional neighborhood, or traditional design requirements. What we are requesting is that in lieu of the approach with this mixture of unit types and the other improvements that are required for the traditional neighborhood, that the property be considered to be zoned to R two from R three to allow for a single unit type to be considered. It would be townhouses, and this layout that I have shown is representative of a potential development option. This does show ninety-six units, which is more units than the eighty unit design of the traditional neighborhood. One of the questions, I think, from the June meeting was, is how does this differ from what was originally proposed? And I would present to you that this option presents and allows for a significantly greater amount of usable green space that could be enjoyed by the individual unit owners or occupants. We're proposing the roadway to be, and all the pavement areas would be privately held, this would not be an area that would be offered for dedication to the township. There would be similar points of access, but in this option, with this change to the zoning, we're getting more units, we have, this is roughly thirty-three percent block total coverage of the area that is considered for the rezoning versus a close to forty percent block coverage on the other design option. So you're getting a better utilization of the land that you're choosing to allow for developments to occur on. It is zoned for development right now, we would be connecting the public sewer and water. Years ago, there was a easement established for the extension of the sewers to serve this, this property. And we asked for your consideration to have your planning commission and have the Lancaster County Planning Commission consider this change of the zoning as an option for the development of this property.
Question, do you have a smaller map we have for us to see, because all of I am.
Because all of that is...
I can just bring closer to you. That's okay.
That's fine. None of us have seen it, so. What the first...
Okay, I said that immediately after the other meeting with the understanding that that might get conveyed to you.
So that's the new one?
This is the proposal. And this was the existing. And you can see, this had the spine, if you will, of the main road to be developed. And then these were two flex and single-family units, some townhouse units grouped in here. Some had frontage out of the line road, others had frontage onto this central street. There were alleys as it was required. Stormwater management is generally the same kind of design as large overhead, mened...
This could be village overlap. Was it considered village overlap?
Yeah.
Yes. The traditional.
You all along here?
And with this design, this has been designed to comply with the zoning requirements of your R2 zone, including the separation between the units of seventy feet. So you get a really, I would say, improvement on the quality of the space that would be around the individual units and relates to the folks' ability to use that property.
Bill, this is proposed under the R2 as a mental community?
Correct.
Single owner?
Correct.
And as you said, that owner would own the streets and all of the...
Correct.
Here's why she goes over the one access.
No, we propose a secondary point of access onto the line road. Whether or not the township would wanna see that as a permanent access or a temporary access, or I'm sorry, emergency access, that could be worked out in the design project as we before. Obviously, we're not asking for you to approve this layout. We're asking for you to consider the zoning change to allow us to present a plan that would be under the new order criteria. And it would have to look for with all the other zoning and stormwater management and requirements, you know, for utility connections and access and everything else.
You could use that same configuration instead of ninety-six and have eighty.
We could. We think there's a benefit, I mean, I know you've been listening to your conversation and probably on where do you direct development? If you can create sixteen more dwelling units, in my opinion, create more open space, have the same or an improved quality of the space that would be resulting from this for people to live here, I think that should be a goal for your community because you're gonna be, where you would agree to develop this piece of land, if we can get a higher and better use of it, I think that would be advantageous so that you don't have to put pressure on other areas that have more density or, you know, spread, expend this out into other areas.
So tell me this, the switching to high density, if we were to rezone it to high density?
Higher.
Higher density. That plan could still change, though.
It could. And we'll also mention that your R3 zone allows, presently allows for eight dwelling units per acre. The R2 zoning allows for five dwelling units per acre.
So this is one of the ideas of, R3 is a denser zoning district than R2.
Correct.
It has a higher number of units per acre permitted, but R3 brings with it some design standards that makes it impossible to obtain that higher number of dwelling units.
That's what we experienced with our other plan. Between the layout of the alleys, all the other elements that were required for access, it really became complicated to, well, they evaluated that and became undevelopable in that format because of the cost of...
And I don't wanna mischaracterize what you said at the June meeting, but what I heard was, if you don't have to do the alleys, you will get more units and more open space.
That's correct.
And that was what one past director of the County Planning Commission once said, "We're not losing farmland to houses. We're losing farmland to streets and lawns." That if you don't have to build those alleys, we can build more houses.
And I personally live in town, so I'm familiar with, you know, the denser arrangement of the space between the units. I can tell you, when there's this open seventy feet between a dwelling unit, it's just a completely different quality of life for folks in that unit. I mean, they can go out, there's seventy feet between them and the neighbor, whereas with our other layout, that was not really the opportunity in the case. You know, we didn't have, you know, those spaces that are adjacent to the buildings are very tight. That's really, you know, they're very tight.
And those were proposed for, say, correct?
No, they were also gonna be held, they were gonna be on individual lots, but they were gonna be held.
But they were designed as...
They could potentially be... Correct.
So are you at your max density there?
We're actually over the density on this layout. I wanted to demonstrate the possibility of going up to a higher density. So in reality, we're at lower block coverage with ninety-six units. It's around six and a half. We're only allowed to go five.
More units required for parking.
Correct. But this layout is compliant with those criteria. It's not like I put, you know, sixteen more units on a year and paid the same, provided for the same amount of parking. I guess, you know, just to compound on that, this is more units, less block coverage in terms of impervious, more available space for the individual users. I guess the other part that, and I discussed this when we made the presentation about, and we went through many meetings with regards to the other layout, the character of that traditional neighborhood, and I know that's very important for some folks, it just is very, was challenging for us to create here because of the relationship that this bears to, let's say, Denver Borough or other village areas. It was very challenging for us to do that. So this is another, I think, advantage of this type of unit. So it would be a very enjoyable or desirable space to have outside of the user.
So is it gonna be a mix of one-bedroom, two-bedroom, or three-bedroom, or kind of, and like, what are you guys thinking price range, just roughly? I'm just curious of the rents.
We didn't design everything yet, but looking probably mostly two-bedroom, probably be, could be a mix of three and one, but probably the majority would be two-bedroom.
So Lorenzo's point, are you planning on this just being, you know, an entire mental community then?
Yeah.
So when you say individual areas, so the landlord will be taking care of all his worries and everything?
Correct.
Okay. I had a question, this might be, why are we highlighting the farmland to the south there?
This is, this is the valley.
Why is this, is this the entire?
That's the whole property.
Okay.
As it exists today. But we're only talking about this portion being rezoned.
Just wanted to make sure.
You overlay the plan on the existing part of the farm?
Correct. Well, I wanna make sure that it's clearly understood. This is all one piece of property. We have to subdivide this in order to allow for this to be independently owned and held piece of property. It's zoned differently. It's zoned industrial to the south of the railroad tracks, but it's zoned, right now, it's zoned R3 to the north.
Probably, yes. Yeah, I just wanted to clarify that as well. Excuse it, it's zoned industrial, right? It's south, I'm just...
And obviously, there's a byway for the railroad that goes through the middle. So our request is for you to consider the rezoning, have your planning commission consider it, have the line district county planning commission consider it, and then we would come back to you with those considerations and ask for your consideration of it at that point. We're not asking for you to approve or deny it tonight. We really just are asking if you would, you know, entertain the potential for it to be
I guess for me, it creates a little bit of a dilemma. You know, I'm all about open space, open space. This setup, I agree, does give you more of that. But there is such a thing as trying to create too many units on a small piece of ground in my mind as well.
Just to be clear, if we, if you change it to the zoning, we're gonna have less units at the end of the day than if we were to go with the other design. If the other property theoretically, now somebody would have to come up with a unit style that would work, but you're allowed to go to eight dwelling units per acre under the current, the current way it's zoned now for fourteen or fifteen acres, you'd have eight dwelling units per acre. Under the new zoning, it would be five dwelling units per acre.
But to be clear, you could make that physical property be eight units.
It was not economically viable. The zoning doesn't, at least for this property, the way it, I think if it were a rectangular piece of property without the same challenges that we have with the narrowness of places, it might be feasible and probably, and I think there are other, you have other projects in your community that are, have made that work in a better way because of, I would say, a more rectangular or uniform type of land area available. This property really did not, it's never lent itself to that efficient application of those requirements of the ordinance. So again, just to be clear, if you were to consider this, it would be a reduction in the number of overall units that would be permitted. However, it would be much more, and it would be additionally, more open space.
And the biggest problem you found with the village overlay was the alleys and the設置?
Yeah, the total cost for all those things to kind of make all of that really happen. And then we had to have curages, and there was just a lot of things that were challenging with regards to that. And I will capture all of the cost concerns that were there, but that's primarily what it was about.
To clarify, your R3 through your previous overlay that you're showing us, the original plan, that adheres to R3 currently?
I would say that it is generally compliant with the zoning and layout requirements of your work because we, we have, that plan has died, but it was generally compliant and would have, you know, we had some things to work through, but it could have been built on that way.
So generally compliant, this one was compliant to R3?
Right. There were, I don't think there were any material changes that would have resulted in loss or gain of units or anything like that. I mean, these were more technical issues related to, you had the stormwater approvals, which was very challenging because of the alleys and there was a lot of things that were very challenging with that layout.
I guess I like the look of your new overlay, but I don't want to, I don't wanna make a decision based off something that would have been feasible in the first place. You know, I don't wanna see, you know... I'm in sales, I understand how the sales...
I was reluctant, and I said this at the June meeting, I was reluctant to give you a plan proposing something because I don't think that's really appropriate, perhaps, that you need to make this decision based on intent, because somebody could come in, we could vanish, we could have our two plan here, and somebody, but I just wanted to give you, and I think you asked at that meeting, what is the difference between the two, and this is a... I also wanted to be conservative in expressing more units here so that you could even, you're trying to get kind of an apples-to-apples comparison. That other unit, other design only had eighty units. This is ninety-six. I just wanted to impress upon you that this is a lot more available space outside of these units that would be usable for the residents. Without, really without another, without a significant negative impact on this around the area or the characters in the roads, adjacent roadways or anywhere.
Well, you've given us something to think about. I know you'd like a decision, but...
I just asked for you to think about it some more and ask for your planning commission to give you some more recommendations.
We have to make a motion to send it to the planning commission. Just for review. Doesn't mean you're making a motion or putting any, just for him to look at it.
Typically, you limit your limits to that action. We don't set your limits or anything else. We take those all as separate considerations.
The planning commission is another set of eyes, and you know, of course, they don't have to decide, I just could sit normally or something here and decide what the community really wants.
I'll make a motion to send the plan to the planning commission for review. Motion of second, all in favor? Aye?
Aye. No.
Motion carries two to one.
Thank you very much. Look forward to talking with you more.
All right, moving on, we have letter C, Z Care Society LLC. We expect you.
Good evening. Susan Buckhorn from Buckland Mall, and I represent Z Care Communities, and Mr. Lee is the principal. And Molly Newt from Red Barn Consulting is here. She's the engineer working with Z Care Communities on this potential excellent project. So Z Care Communities owns the existing mobile home park at Long Deanna Circle. And that existing mobile home park came into existence through the township's approval of nineteen, back in nineteen eighty-five. And at that time, that, the property, which is eleven point four seven acres, part of it was zoned R2 and part of it was zoned A2 and the fourth level. The portion that was zoned A2 was kept as recreation open space because at the time, the agricultural zone didn't allow mobile home parks. So now, after, you know, fast forward, the township rezoned that entire parcel as mobile home park residential zone. So Z Care Communities who purchased the mobile home park would like to develop that recreation open space portion to create seventeen mobile home park lots. And so as part of this process, my client and Red Barn have been working with township officials, Mr. Ryan, Mr. Ryan are the engineer, through the sketch plan process. And through that sketch plan process, there were a couple of issues, three issues really, that I wanna talk to the board tonight, that came up that my client needs, needs an answer, needs direction, and we need to, before my client spends substantial resources and time, preparing the formal end development and going that route. I had discussed the issues with the term cream, and we are here tonight to discuss them with the board. So what I'd like to do, what I think makes sense to start, is to have Molly use, just review the details of the proposed development so that we all have an idea of what we're talking about before I talk about these couple of issues, so that we can get in the context. So Molly wants to go ahead and just explain what the plan is?
I'd like to give you a little perspective on the previous land development plan.
Yeah, we have your information.
So back in 1985, the zoning boundary ran right along through the property here. They had proposed at that time to, to build 36 lots. Since then, they've only, they've actually only built about 32 lots. And with that, there are several different open spaces and recreational areas. There's an open space area in the northern portion, an open space area to the east, and then a recreational area at the, that surrounded the old stack. And a recreational area called for, whether it be a basketball court or volleyball court, and had some play equipment, which was more of a old stack. And the called for, and there was also an open space area dedicated to the basic housing. It amounted to about five acres, more or less, with the majority of it being just open space in the agricultural zone and recreational area that was in the, of the zoning property. So since then, the property being zoned, it's all now a mobile home park, which is, which mobile home is, is allowed to expand in this property up to, it was 49 lots. So we're proposing an additional 17 lots to get up to the 32 plus the 17, it gives 49 lots. Going off of the existing old stack, we're proposing a one-way road to go towards the, towards the south and loop around the fact to the old stack, which we would give the lots in that area. And this area again was the area of recreational and open space. But for the zoning ordinance, 10% of the property's part of the, of recreational space to match the 11 acres, where we would give that space, sapped and then again, in the northern portion, which was originally open space, as well as two other spaces within the lot development area. That would be, we're proposing community gardens and another recreational area, as well as make the recreational area to the form proposals would be, I'm going to ask. The volleyball courts, pickleball courts, and big plays, and some old facilities. These areas, we would give that 10% of the rest. And so that's what we're here to discuss, natural alignment. There might be some community ornamental requirements. Within the SADO, that's what the projections, I think, the size of the office and stuff.
So the three issues that we need to talk with the board about tonight is first, the fact that there's a recorded 1985 land development plan that approved this parcel to be developed as it is now. So that needs to be addressed. I have discussed that with Attorney Cream. And, you know, the thought was to just include with the land development submission, a request to revise the 1985 plan, to have that in the land development submission with really a reference that the 1985 plan is being revised. So that's the first issue of, you know, would the board approve that approach to address this expansion to develop that, that space that on the 1985 plan is designated as recreational and open spaces? Given the fact that it used to be zoned that and it's not anymore. So there's been a significant change by rezoning the entire parcel as mobile home park residential, which I think supports this developer plan and the way to address the fact that there is a recorded 1985 plan. So that's the first issue. I can run through all three issues and do you want to go issue by issue?
We'll go, run through all three and then we'll, we'll have discussion.
Okay. So that's, that's the first issue, just to deal with the 1985 plan. The second issue that Molly touched on is, under the zoning ordinance for mobile home parks, it requires near less than 10% of the total mobile home park area shall be set aside for recreation and open spaces. With this parcel at 11.47 acres, that calculates to 1.15 acres that we require as 10% to keep this open space in recreation. What the development plan that Red Barn developed actually exceeds that 10% to the total of 1.37 acres. So that requirement under the zoning ordinance can be met with this proposal. The SADO, under section 19472 for mobile home parks, refers you back to the parks and open space provisions under the SADO 19446. And when you look at 19446, it requires that the developer shall set aside, and this is for residential or agricultural development, subsection 19446 V1, the developer shall set aside near less than 2,000 square feet of recreation area for each lot or dwelling unit. So under the SADO, you know, it's referring to that section. However, when you read, it's using the term lot or dwelling unit. And when you look at those definitions under both the zoning, under the SADO, a lot is any area of land intended as a single unit for purposes of ownership. Then a mobile home is defined as, mobile homes placed in parks shall meet the requirements for mobile home parks. A mobile home placed on an individual lot shall be considered a dwelling. So the township has separated out, you know, that if it's just a mobile home park on a lot, then it's a dwelling, if it's not, then it's not a dwelling. So the reference to dwelling unit in the SADO recreation space section would seem to exclude the mobile home parks. And then a mobile home lot is defined separately than a lot, as a parcel of land in a mobile home park versus a lot is a single unit for ownership purposes. The SADO doesn't define dwelling, but the zoning ordinance does. And the zoning ordinance defines dwelling to include single-family dwellings, duplexes, multifamily, and townhouses. And it puts, again, has the same definition for mobile homes that if it's part of a mobile home park, it follows the mobile home guidelines. If it's a single lot with one mobile home, it's considered a dwelling. So what, you know, I would propose is that section 19446 just simply doesn't apply to mobile home parks. There's a conflict with having 10% of zoning ordinance and then 2,000 square feet per lot for a mobile home lot, which under the ordinance, a mobile home lot, it's a minimum lot size of 6,000 square feet. So then you're asking for 2,000 square feet per 6,000 square feet mobile home lot to be reserved for open space. And if you go farther into the 19446, it gets into, well, if you can't need it, you have to pay in lieu of, which would really be cost prohibitive, you know, for this, doesn't seem to fit for a mobile home park. The minimum lot size, like I said, 6,000 square feet to 2,000 is a land burden of 33% versus a quarter acre lot is only a land burden of 18%. So the costs to try to comply with the SADO would then make it more expensive to rent these lots because of the cost to have to develop this. So that is the other issue of what do you, you know, what do you do when the zoning ordinance conflicts with the SADO? And then to me, what I'm proposing to the board is that it's pretty simple solution that it just doesn't apply because we're not dealing with a lot as defined or dwelling in it under section 19446.
It's already determined, made by the zoning officer. Counsel has expressed this concern and the one that followed, right?
Pardon?
You, you discussed the three points the township suggested.
I, I did discuss this with Attorney Cream, he was going to go into it.
So there's a, there's a threshold issue here, and that's what we're looking at. The 1985 plan preserves the area in green and the area in blue. I'll give thought as a zoning officer to your points with regards to the conflict and code. But I'm not going to do that until, and that's why you're here tonight, the board says it's agreeable to revise the plan to remove land that was preserved in 1985. We have all the time in the world to discuss the ordinance after that. But that's putting, that's putting the cart before the horse.
Well, okay.
This is, this is why you were asked to attend the ninth meeting, to see if the board was agreeable to your submitting the plan that revises the plan that was approved and recorded in 1985.
Well, thank you, Mr. Ryan, yes. But in order to even justify spending time and significant resources to develop this, these are, when there's a conflict, the planners need to know what the answer is. I mean, it can't be guessed.
If, if the board says it's agreeable to move forward, I can get working on the answers tomorrow. I'm not asking you to, to fully engineer a plan first. But it makes sense, before I issue a zoning determination, to address this issue first.
I, that's why we're here. I just, since there are three pretty clear issues that are outstanding, that we really need some type of resolution. But yeah, the first issue is the key issue.
And that's, and that's with the board. The other two issues are zoning determination.
I'm sorry, it could be my fault that I said, "Address all three of your concerns prior to the first." We could have spoken about the first one and could have moved on and or descended it right there, so I apologize.
Oh, that's, that's fine.
So I guess we'll stop here and we will have discussion about, is the board okay with or not okay with the recorded plan in 1985? I wasn't even born, so I don't even know who to even talk to about this one. My, my, my question, my honest question would be, why was there never a park put there in 1985? Yes, sir, what's your name?
James Weaver.
Okay.
John Hoffer, the student, bought this piece of parcel from, he's in his 80s. And he was involved with the original development. And I am very confident, had that been zoned properly or all as the same, the zoning split it in half. So that's why they chose not to go out farther with that zoning. And so they developed what they could. And then since the zoning has been changed, the board.
Two times remaking?
To accommodate mobile home park the whole way. The utilities are stubbed right to the edge of that field. They had plans, I believe, at some point to extend it. And that's what we're here tonight to try and figure out. To me, the township has expressed that these are short in housing units. It's zoned for that use. And I think it's in your best interest to consider the possibility of either revising it or whichever, I don't know what the best way forward would be, but it sounds like maybe revisions of the original ones.
Do you find it problematic that the recorded plan had recreational areas improvements to be put in? Was there supposed to be, I don't know, basketball courts or something?
There was.
And it's never got done?
No, it was there. There's the pavement still there, I don't think it was maintained, it's not there today. But you see that square on there, that's the basketball court, just south here, just below the policy.
So you're, you're saying at one time and everything that was supposed to be installed was? As far as I'm aware, I was not involved in the original development. Yeah?
No.
There were some swing sides and playgrounds, but it's probably been removed since.
I'm here.
And I would just add, I, as I said, it was two different zoning districts once you approved and then allowed mobile home parks, that is not the case now. And so a land, an approved land development plan that has the open space doesn't completely preserve that forever. I mean, things change. There is no easements, there's no memorialization that it's the development site's proposal that it can't be developed. And it was rezoned, these are the parcels now to be the residential. So the fact that it was designated that in 1985, it wasn't needed forever that way. This isn't a conservation easement that was already there.
So Tommy, just, this is, it's zoned mobile home park. So the board needs to decide whether or not we want to revise the, the recorded plan or not. Just because it's zoned, that doesn't mean we have to revise the plan because it's a recorded plan.
So. Something that was just said is in fact correct. It doesn't always have to remain developed as it was permitted to be developed under the 1985 plan. But a new plan to, let's call it, redevelop the site has to be processed. And that new plan to redevelop the site would revise the 5 plan and replace it with, let's call it, the 24 or 25 plan. Currently, the township has a 1985 plan that was approved, was compliant with the ordinances and all regulations at the time. And that is the plan that you could choose to enforce. If that basketball court was installed and never maintained, the township could enforce the required maintenance to put it back into usable form. Do you believe that now these, 25 years later, is it that long?
Yeah. 30, 30.
30, okay. 30 some years later, if that's still feasible. Or you could, and actually, you can't prevent them from submitting it. But you could permit consideration of redeveloping the site so that it's compliant with current zoning. And the discussion that Tommy and the zoning officer and I as the solicitor have had with the applicant is, there's new zoning. You could propose something that is compliant with the new zoning, but there's a process for doing it. It's going to be a land development plan. And that land development plan is going to have a component to it that mentions that it's revising a recorded land development plan from 1985. That's a necessary thing so that we all understand what we're doing because that 1985 plan is not going away. It's going to be in the records forever. The new plan has to address that we're replacing that plan with a new revised land development plan, if that's what you choose to do.
So my mind's thinking as you're speaking with that. If that's what we choose to do and we're getting rid of rec space that's no longer there, right? Is the board, can the board request a open space fee for what's there currently and the additional?
Well, I think that that's-
Later down?
That's, that's not anything that I can ask to consider. That's something that staff and your planning consultants, Technicon, would consider in a review of a plan that would be submitted. Now-
But if that's what the board, I'm speaking on behalf of myself, if that's one thing that I would, for example, would like to see if I were indeed be okay with adding on to this, is that-
That, that-
But again, then there's a zoning officer determination before all that, so.
Right. But, you know, negotiated conditions of approval are also permitted because you have an enforceable plan that has a substantial amount of rec land. And where I disagree with those button is that there's nothing that makes it forever in the sense that you have the authority to change it. It is forever unless you choose to change it.
Perfect.
But I would just add that the township also decided to rezone the entire parcel of Mobile Home Park. So it's no longer ZAG where it was back in 1985. So that decision was made by the township, that, that green and blue is now Mobile Home Park.
So I, I'll add to that. I'll add to that. Were you here at the beginning of the meeting?
Yes.
Okay. So you heard kind of what my speech was about the zoning in the township when it got done? Redone in 2003, our map's about twenty-seven years old now, and this board's getting much feedback from the, from constituents about zoning on our map, that it was zoned that way and it shouldn't be and this and that. So, uh, I'm not saying that's not the case here, but there's other properties in the township that were rezoned back in 2003, right? From one thing to another. And apparently, it's a big mistake now, right? That's, that's what we're hearing.
I don't think that's a possibility because-
It's opinion. It's opinion.
This, this, what the township did was zone this parcel of Mobile Home Park. So, you know, what I heard Mr. Ryan say in the beginning of this meeting was that this township prides itself on not being over regulatory and not making it hard for its residents to do things that they want to do. Um, and that's part of it here because this project makes sense. It's going to provide, um, you know, Mobile Home Park's lower, lower cost for people to live in an existing Mobile Home Park, that's zoned Mobile Home Park. That, you know, I can't think of anything that makes more sense than that, so, um, otherwise it's just property sitting there, not, not being utilized.
People love green space around here. If you haven't got that point yet, I did. I, I learned, you know, people, that's, that's all I keep hearing, everywhere you turn. But again, what's the wishes of the board here?
Well, I, I agree with your premise there. At one point, you know, that probably got zoned to Mobile Home Park for ZAG for a continuity reason. Uh, you know, but, you know, I'm a little hung up, I guess, on the fact that the, the rec area wasn't maintained and it fell by the wayside. When I, when I look at your, your current plan there with one major rec area, but then a little scattered pieces on the side meeting the proposed, um, you know, I'm not sure that really gives a, a nice recreational area to meet the residents' wishes. So I'm not against your thought process here, it's just how do we get from here to there? You know, take that rec space that was there, make it something very usable and desirable. And, uh, you know, I guess for that there is, in an addition like this to an existing plan, I guess any store board would be just requiring some addition. Everything else would be made fun per se.
It's the new improvement.
I thought as much. Eighty-five, it was probably not required except for-
Oh, no, um, you just, you regulated greater plan.
There was an existing potential base that was on, on the original plan. So there was something.
There was something, right, but-
It's, it's functional today.
I don't remember about that, but it was, it was designed-
It is still functional. And I guess maybe one other thing is I, I understand the recreational area that's proposed maybe is a little bit scattered, but that's how the park is. In other words, we either make people go from the one end the whole way up to the other or we can divide it, and you know what I mean? So I don't think that's really, you know, they can go to the one that's closest to their house, in other words. I heard also at the beginning of the meeting, when someone is zoned for a specific use, that you can't really prevent that from happening. I did not ask for rezoning property. I've been here at meetings and I've heard other people asking for rezoning. We were just asking to develop what is actually zoned for and meet existing requirements, and we're going that, and I'm just asking consideration that you should, and I think affordable housing is a need in the township.
Well, to your downfall, there's a recorded deed in 1985, their plan, their-
That's fine, but we're, we're presenting a new one or a device, whichever use would, you know, so basically, your question to that would be, is like, this thing forever has to be a Mobile Home Park. We could tear them all out and tell the people to move and request for townhouses in or something, you know, and submit a whole new plan. I have, I couldn't afford to do that. I'm just trying to utilize the land purchase for what it's intended for.
And I, I agree with your general premise there. You know, it was, it was reassessed for a reason at some point, somebody had that, that thought process, you know, we have to, we have to go along with it. Just, you know, I guess the devil's in the details of how we get from here to there.
Right. And the township made the decision for the Mobile Home Park Presidential Zone to require 10% of areas to be set aside, which this plan exceeds that 10% of the, the areas proposed. So, I mean-
Okay, you want to highlight those two small areas there? What, what would be an idea that would go in there that would be a recreational? By ground or what would you do?
We had proposed pickleball courts.
Would that fit in those small areas?
Yeah, I think it would on the north, on the north side.
In the area?
Yeah. The first township meeting, one of the first questions that came up was like, would the public be allowed to use it? And I'm like, well, I thought later, I'd say, well, I guess we have to talk, and if I spend and put it in, it's going to be a private court. If the township had interest in working something out that that would actually be open to the public, I would consider it, but-
Is the road that's in there currently dedicated, or is the private?
Private.
And the continuation you would have proposed to be the same?
What is this right now? What is this? This is a field right now, correct?
Right.
What is this right here? This is the backside of Four Seasons?
Yeah.
What's this right here?
It's a-
So this is all lax and this is farmland right here too? Is this a, is this a tree row? Is that a brush, brush row?
Yeah.
Is this currently being farmed or no?
Yes. Ah, yeah, I think so.
So it's, so thirty-nine years ago, this is all farmland. Uh, Four Seasons is no longer, there's no, not even, uh, nothing there. This is the railroad, correct?
No, you're always here, right, right in the middle. Oh, right there, right there. So that field to the left is farmland, but I actually think it is commercial. I didn't, I didn't know if you were zoning that, but it's a-
Yeah.
All right. The area here is, is, uh, that's the traditional residential, which is very developed.
Yep, yep, this one, yep.
So, if you see, this is all-
This is used.
That's ZAG. Now, this is, this is-
I was thinking it was split back here, but it is ZAG.
It is ZAG, yeah.
And that's the neighboring property.
And, and it's very, it's like, I'll share your own. So, you're looking at, this is densely developed, this is like industrial. Here's a, where the, next to the having that, so, I mean, you know, the context of the area can greatly be consistent with the area, the neighborhood also.
I disagree.
What do you have to do? What's the, what's the, is that revising the park, proving our vision to the plan? Allow you to come forward with the vision to the park? Correct. If they're applying to this current, is that what you're describing? What the zoning is for? The only, the only thing that can hold me back is you just want to keep it the way it is here in this story, because there's a revised plan. What the zoning is, is another one of these situations. Could be taken for us.
And I will just mention, I'm using trying to get this issue straightened out between the sketch plan process, planning commission, I've spoken with Attorney Green, he, you know, recommended that we could just do what I said, put a note to revise the 1985 plan. And that's why we're here, so that, you know-
This is the proper place-
And a resolution-
It's the proper place to be. This is where these conversations need to happen. They can't happen anywhere else. They have to happen here. You brought this to the planning commission, correct? What did the planning commission say?
It's my understanding that the company was resolved and that Mr. Weaver was told to get an attorney and to talk to the solicitor directly, which I was routine, and I did talk to Attorney Green about this, and, um, I mean, the way we had left it was for Red Board to communicate with, um, the township engineer about exactly what kind of note they went on a formal land development, a formal land development submission. But, you know, in, in abundance of caution, we wanted to come here first and talk to the board about it instead of just developing a formal land on the plan and spending all the time and resources and not, still not having an answer to this issue for property that's owned from a-
Well, I would, I would say that the zoning kind of, from my opinion, warrants allowing that piece of ground to go forward for the park to extend. I think by right that it's already zoned for that. I know all three of us probably are, are not happy about taking, taking ZAG land out for that, but here, once again, we're starting to free the zone.
And it's not ZAG land now, it's not being used for farming now, it's under the parks, the parks. Yes, that's why, oh wait, okay, some of this, so some of this right now is your leasing?
Yeah, the neighbor farms. So it is not an area where the people go out to walk their dogs or something, let's make that clear. They don't even, a lot of them probably don't even know it's part of the same property. So you can call it a recreational area or whatever, but it's not what it's being used for, it's, it's a farm.
Isn't that row of trees in between?
Ten or fifteen years ago, the park would have been there. You'd be currently taken out of park to go more houses. Get what I'm trying?
Yeah.
That, that's my echo. If, if there was a park there, we wouldn't be having this discussion whether it was zoned like industrial or identity or whatever. But since there was a basketball court there, not maintained, grass grew over it, nobody sees it no more, nobody plays there no more, now they're farming it, to the gentleman's point.
Well, it's not a public, but yeah, and I see that, but to counterpoint that, it would have been a private park.
Correct.
So it would have been private to the landowner. And so, you know- And that's okay, in a homeowner's situation, it would be the same thing.
Yeah, they maintain their own roots.
They own the parks in the township.
Well, and just to go back to your point, there's two different pieces. There's the recreation area, that's, you know, 1.1 acres that had the courts and the swing sets. But then the other part was open space and there was a, there's a row of vegetation.
It's privacy.
Um, you can train there, so nobody even accesses that back part.
So this blue is 1.1 acres? Is that what you're saying? Or just a small area?
Just that blue area, yes.
The blue acres, 1.1 acres.
Right, that's only, yeah, actually, I was like, where did I get that from? It says it right on the plane.
This right here, it says.
Yeah, area 1.1.
And this open space is 2.85 acres, you saw?
Seven, five.
2.75?
And it didn't need to be there, we presume, at the time of that land development plan, other than the parking lot was a different zoning at the time.
So we're talking about three acres?
If it was, I mean, back then, if the development would apply for slight variance or something, that potentially have all potentially have been developed, it's the zoning that was the difference between then and now.
The, the blue is 1. what?
1.11.
And the proposed revised plan provides in three pieces, how much? So there is a-
A gain.
A, a, a-
Gain.
A parallel rec component in the plan. It takes the open space into the office to be in.
The two shaded areas you show on that plan, the one on the lower portion of the plan, that's almost landlocked and it's on a one-way street where there is no parking. That is bordered by one of the lots, property lines and road. That will become an extension of that property owner's side yard within a year of the house being built. It has no recreational value.
We're proposing recreational facilities there, either in the form of a community garden or pickleball. It does have road frontage and-
I, I always say that because of, when you calculate the number, that triangle piece that will become some of these side yards included in that number.
Well, can you hear this one over here?
Yes.
So I would also say to you that what you're being asked to consider is, may they proceed with a new plan that in part functions as a revision of the old plan for your consideration of approval? You still have all of your approval rights in that plan process, and I expect that there's going to be more than one way for your question because there always is. So, for various reasons, you will not have to approve that revised plan. You're just being asked to permit them to proceed with a revised plan for your consideration.
Maybe the revised plan preserves all the area now shown in blue someplace else, a different configuration.
Yeah, and that's-
Instead of carving it up to the maximum number of homes that are permitted, maybe that- maybe that one point one acre shown in blue is reconfigured and saved in bulk someplace else in sight. Then you lose a couple of lots. As part of the deal.
That may be the, the cost of this design.
And then build the park that you told the township in nineteen eighty five.
The park was built, I think it just wasn't maintained in the point car.
And build a keep.
After that. Oh, sorry, what did you say?
Then it's built and maintained this time.
And that's what he was proposing in the recreational area. Pickleball courts, barbecue areas and playground equipment. That would replace that playground and put, it couldn't have been so long ago.
That's the open space area up top. I'm talking about preserving the area and the.
Well, the open space area at the top is an acre. So you're talking about point one five difference between that blue and that, and this.
No, the open space area at the top of what's remaining. And retain the area and look.
Yeah, we, we, our, our plan is to revise this plan. To revise the plan with that, with the revised plan, we would reconfigure the recreational and open space to meet the current zoning ordinance, which is ten percent. And we would relocate that recreational area up in the northern area where the open space is now.
So this area stays the same. What's there today is there tomorrow.
That's not what we, what we're proposing.
What I'm saying is that this area, either this configuration or another remain the same in terms of area.
Our new proposal is going to have those lots there. We're not, we can't afford to keep that open just because you don't think we can use that up there for.
I think what he's trying to say is, you have an acre up there. It would be, instead of losing this acre, and you're losing this acre, figure out another place to get another full acre instead of just taking point one five and adding it to that one. Or whatever it is, you're actually not adding anything to that one, did it?
You gotta have about two acres.
He's not saying maintain this, he's saying find two acres instead of just. What Tommy's referencing. I, am I right in saying that? That's true, okay. So he's not saying nothing in that blue space, find another spot. So if there's one unit out here.
That would be definitely an issue.
I, I was just using that as an example, but yeah, same, same. To Tom, to Mr. Ryan's point as well, I mean, if we just made this little corner here, it would become.
So is we're going to impose a higher percentage than the zoning ordinance requires?
No, we're going to impose a lower percentage than what that plan requires.
I couldn't hear what you're saying.
The discussion now is to impose a lower percentage of open space and rec land than what that plan requires. Because what that plan requires is the enforceable requirement for that property. Doing nothing on that property, now that this discussion has been had, doesn't seem to be a choice. Either you need to comply with that plan, or you need to submit a compliant, acceptable revised plan. I think that's what the manager was saying.
And that's what, that's what our sketch plan is attempting to do.
And I think that starts the discussion.
But to be clear, our, our plan is to relocate that recreational space to the open space.
You're relocating the recreational, the memories, no space.
Yes. Oh, absolutely, yes.
Let's not confuse rare footage with actual playgrounds.
Yes.
Days in, there's less ground available for playground. There's less open space for residents.
I, I think there's one point oh three acres up available or one point, one point one five.
That northern area has an engine cross, which is not accessible to the residents now. In the new plan, that will be the recreational area. And if I, I can, I'm not close enough to read it, but I actually think it's larger than what we would be taking.
The open space. Is that reading? That's one point three five.
I, I think the way the discussion was trending is there are more requirements in nineteen eighty five. There are requirements in twenty twenty four. The requirements in twenty twenty four are less than what the requirements were in nineteen eighty five. The discussion seems to be, is there a middle ground of less than nineteen eighty five, more than twenty twenty four? That could be the basis of the discussion.
Yeah, and just to chime in there, attorney cream, I don't think it was, the open space requires, I think because it was zone ag, it didn't allow one of the home parks, is what it was. That, that wasn't all required, was recreational.
Whatever the, whatever the ordinance required in nineteen eighty four, this plan got approved and that plan required it to be open space, not farmed. That this plan required it to be usable rec land, not ill-maintained vacant space. So a violation in nineteen eighty five, or nineteen ninety five, or two thousand and five is a violation today, the township could enforce that plan. And have you provide usable recreation space to your residents. What we're saying is, at least the consensus sign here is, the township is considering allowing a discussion of committing less than what the nineteen eighty five plan required by way of a revision. How much less is for the planning commission and this board to discuss when there's a plan before?
That's the provision of current zoning, the setting of government and new land.
You may always do less than what the current zoning allows you to do. That's the point of the earlier plan. You can always develop to a less intense level than what the ordinance requires. You just can't develop more intense.
Very correct, but I don't think there's many developers that do that.
Well, every once in a while.
It's about economics and making it work. I live on a farm and I wouldn't want to turn it into a mobile home park. I bought a mobile home park to help put food on the table for my ten children. And I think it, we can present a plan because it is zone mobile home park. And then you'll be forced to make a decision. And I think, I think, Tom, what we were discussing about the recreational area, I think that can be looked at after we decide whether we can actually submit a vision. You know what I mean? That's sort of the details that would be worked out. Because my question is, I can't afford to spend thousands of dollars to draw this up and submit it to you and then you say you can't do it.
I think the zoning, in my opinion, I think the zoning allows for it to happen. It's just the nice details. I'm, I'm hearing a lot of questions about the, the rec area. And I have those concerns myself. You can submit things, but we can make, we can say that's a force, what was already there. My thought is let's try and work, work this out.
We're talking about, Lorenzo says a lot, we need to move forward. I'm a, you know, I've said this before, I'm a property rights guy. Mr. Weaver, correct? Mr. Weaver bought this property and hopes of providing for his family. I'm not about Mr. Weaver spending all kinds of money to present a plan, thousands of dollars to present a plan. He's already spending thousands of dollars this evening. I don't know if he costs an hour, so we're holding you up. But I, you know, it's already zoned. It's already there. Thirty-nine years ago, it was owned as green space and obviously never got used. I, we, we've changed ordinances over the last forty years to have ten percent of green space or rec space. And I think we keep getting away from, this is not, this is not township recreational space. This is private property recreational space. So the township made an ordinance for saying that a developer needs to have this amount of recreation space for their residents. And so if all of that is met, I don't think, I think we're, we've been beating this way too long. It's his property. The recreation space is for those people that live there. And if those folks that live there demand the recreational space, then we, as the township, would have to uphold that, that plan. We haven't had any complaints over the last forty years that there hasn't been a basketball court there. We have nobody here that's against this plan. I, you know.
I, you know, I know.
I don't know, I'm sorry, is there anyone here that's against this plan?
We're not opening up to the board yet, so.
Well, I don't know, I'm just, we've been talking about it for an hour. I just, you know, I've been sitting here, again, I'm a property rights person. Mr. Weaver bought the property. He's following all of our current ordinances, our current rules of the township and what, how person, how property is supposed to be used. We're protecting the residents by those ordinances and he's following them. So I don't see why we don't have a discussion about a possible revision to a plan that's forty years old.
But you know, that is a costly business.
Yeah.
You own a business.
I own a business.
I get it.
If everything was easy, we wouldn't spend money to make money.
I get it.
It's a costly doing business. You gotta have attorneys, you gotta have this, you gotta have that.
I'm not agreeing with, I'm not belittling anybody's position for attorney. I'm just saying.
Well, we're having this conversation because there's a recorded plan. There wouldn't be a recorded plan. Like Mr. Weaver said, you're forced to make a decision. You have, you have to make a decision, my property's own mobile home park. So the question comes back, what's this board want to do? Do you want to allow revisions to a recorded plan? Yes or no? It's soon, or we can beat around the bush another hour. I'll go for a walk and come back. You guys probably still want me to go.
I have a run proposal for you.
I said what I wanted to say. I'm about, I, I would like to see the open space. If not in one spot, in another.
The open space preserved somewhere else on that property that was already recorded.
Or, or I had, I had mentioned, and it's kind of too early of saying it, about the, the recreation fee. You know, there, there's a big, there's talks about a park going in at Wabash.
Well, there isn't.
Well, getting bigger, or, you know.
In closing distance of your property.
And that's, and that's for the community, that's not private. So that's why I was talking about, you know, if this were to get, we were to be able to get this plan to revise, I had a proposal, like, but it's too early to say, you know, like, kept, you know, uh, all the units there, all the current units that were put in in nineteen eighty five, what if we give up the acreage, Tommy said about the one acre, make that up somewhere else on this plan? For him to get the houses he wants in there, can we say, okay, pay us a rec fee for all the houses that are in the old park and the new park? We get that money and go bring it to the park across the street where the whole community can use it? Hey, Lou.
Again.
It's too early to say.
If you, if you're in the plan process, you can really see the conditions.
Correct. So, so since we're still too early to that, my answer, I'll say it nice and loud, my answer is no. If you two gentlemen want to move it forward, go ahead. I'll make my decision later. But as of now, without knowing those details, I'm a no.
You can't decide those details without.
Exactly. You gotta get to it. So if you guys want to get it from here to there, feel free.
Are you following all this?
I think so, but I, you're, you're forgetting what you're saying. The certain mobile home park. And I can spend money and we can comment the plan and then we'll go through all that diggy stuff. But fine, it's going to come down to whether you are going to allow me to expand or not.
And I'll say no.
And how do you do that on the certain mobile home park?
Because there's a recorded plan.
We, we bring a revised one.
We have to approve for you to revise.
We are redeveloped.
Well, we have to approve for you to revise your plan, correct?
We can, we can bring a new plan.
And as long as there are no waivers requested, this board is bound to approve it. But waivers are discretionary acts.
Your plan has a list of.
So the fact that the township made the decision to zone the entire parcel of the home park, the township made that.
I was going over two decades ago, two decades.
It doesn't matter, but the zone mobile home park, it's mobile home park. It allows for the mobile home park on the property. That's a big change.
So you don't think there's any other stakes on that zoning plan?
It doesn't matter what the stakes are on the zoning plan.
And again, that's, that's the zoning ordinance. And there's a subdivision and land development ordinance that says how you develop that mobile home park. And that's where the ordinance is.
Do you guys want to get it over the home? Wish you the board.
Yeah, I, I do, I do. You know, I understand that we have these red concerns about what was supposed to be there before, that, that something has to be worked out there.
I don't know what all that means other than it may have to be shuffled around as far as where the rec area is.
If you're looking for classification on that, we've been talking about it for an hour without a conclusion.
Matt. Lorenzo made his, his stance. Jeff Ryan made a motion to accept revisions to the plan or, you know, I'm trying to figure out which direction to go here because if, you know.
It would be, I, I think, it's an unusual situation.
Right.
I appreciate that the board might be uncertain on how to proceed with an unusual situation. I think an appropriate motion would be that the board would be agreeable to the filing of an application for land development approval that in part revises the recorded nineteen eighty five plan. And that the board will process that plan under the current zoning and subdivision and land development ordinance requirements as any other plan.
I'll make that motion as stated by attorney.
And luckily we're recording the.
Can you repeat that?
I'm gonna calculate.
I'll second that. Motion. Motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries two to one. And just, just to be clear, I'm not saying I'm against the plan. I'm just, I stated my fact, my stance where I'm at, okay? That, just to be clear.
And Tommy, you will proceed with some of the.
Zone issues.
Technical issues to help, yeah, get that plan drawn and submitted.
Seems like some of the second and third issues you had would be a good conversation with Tommy. It seems like the conflicting, as you were pointing out, maybe we can straighten those out.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks for the questions.
Action items, July 18th, twenty twenty four, meeting minutes.
I have no corrections.
Only correction I had was I noted it. I'll prove the meeting minutes as presented. I make a motion to approve the meeting minutes as presented.
I'll second.
Motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. The M M O, minimal, minimum municipal obligation. You want to take that, Tom?
Tommy, take it. Sure. At the pension meeting the other day, there was a recommendation made to make a contribution to the M M O for the defined benefit pension plan. And I recall the pension committee recommended twenty-five percent contribution to be made towards the total amount that was due to be paid this year. That was the recommendation with board supervisors. And board supervisors, if they so choose, can establish whatever payment toward the M M O in advance of our requirement, a deposit on state aid, which is expected on or about the first of October, in balance of the contributions to the plan, which would be required beginning of next year. And recall, last year, the board decided to contribute to the defined benefit plan contributions in the amount of seventy thousand dollars per month for months.
You have that dollar figure or the, the total figure and the quarter figure figure?
Yeah, so the, uh, the M M O contribution to the defined benefit plan for this year is approximately two hundred and fifty-one thousand four hundred dollars. That's just the defined benefit plan.
That balance needs to go in by October, correct?
Uh, no, the, the state aid that we receive has to be placed into the pension fund within thirty days of receipt. If there's a balance, that balance has to be paid by the end of the year. But you, you don't have to wait until the fall to start making contributions to the plan. You can pay it off January if you want. Um, what we did in the past, at least my two past years, was, uh, we were strategically placing it in the market when there was ups and downs. That's what we were doing, if I remember correctly.
Well, last year was a defined amount, uh, the same for four months in a row.
So like God knows how to do that.
Yes.
So roughly, it'd be around sixty-five?
Sixty-two thousand each year.
Would be a quarter.
Would be a quarter. And again, that's just the defined benefit.
Keep in mind that, that amount is already an interest-bearing account for us.
It's making us money over at Unisib right now.
It is.
So five percent coming? So it's not like it's not making us anything. It's making us five percent right now in the current money market. So since we haven't done it, it's not like we shot ourselves in the foot. We're still making five percent on that money. We can either leave it like that and wait, or we can just make a motion to approve a transfer of X amount of dollars and wait for the state aid to come in and then put it all in.
It was my thought to get some of it over there. Just. And if we're going to move some of it over there, it's always beneficial to do it in pieces instead of one chunk. Because you're playing the average where the, where the market is at as opposed to just at one time, it could be higher level.
Sixty-two?
So we have to have that completed by the fall in October, is that correct?
Sixty-two eight fifty. I'm sorry.
We have to have it by, have this completed by October?
No, by, by, in October, honor about October first, we'll get it scheduled. That has to be reduced.
Within thirty days.
Any contribution you can afford that isn't state aid can be taken during the year, but by December thirty-first, everything, Unisib obligation has to be.
So we have to do two fifty, one four hundred, so sixty-two, six sixty-three.
Two eighty-five.
And it's August first, so we could say from the dollar cost average, we could do sixty-three of the next four months instead. Instead of all at one time, or we could say all at one time.
Uh, per year.
Or we could say half and half.
So it's good to report our, our pension for the police is still a hundred percent funded.
Over ninety.
So. Not a hundred percent.
Not over a hundred, sorry. Over ninety percent funded. So, um.
I would say, I think it's a better idea to do it.
Do it the next four months.
Yeah. Just from an investment standpoint, I'd say we usually do that starting here in the month of August.
Correct.
Okay, but the, the state aid is going to come in honor about October for us. So we really got two more months. So last year, we were making contributions up to the proceeding of the state aid. We made two hundred and eighty thousand dollars in contributions. The state aid that came in was all two hundred and thirteen thousand dollars, about a hundred and eighty-one thousand trillion of the pension. So with the township making that contribution in advance of the state aid, the state aid could be used to reverse pension for that advanced payment. There's, there's not going to be an opportunity to make payments before it, because the state aid has come in. And that's going to be an obligation, a balance obligation. So I can do it all in two payments or do partial payments.
Do partial payments, does that, can we do a plus or minus?
Yeah, sure. Yeah, that can be sort of a connect. Once the state aid comes in, we'll be counting that financial, basically a key.
Right. That's what the financial guys are told.
Is there a motion?
Sure.
Right. Really? How long is it here, really?
What was that? That was a, a quarter of the amount of sixty.
Sixty-two eight fifty.
Sixty-two eight fifty here in August with the remainder going in October. What state aid issues?
Last year we got stated and it's a ten point.
Hold my motion. Go ahead. Let's see what he has.
Do you want me to make a motion to approve that?
You want it?
Okay, well, I'll make a motion to approve a contribution to the defined benefit pension plan, uh, in the amount of
sixty-two eight fifty.
Sixty-two eight fifty over four payments in the next two months.
So you're making two payments this month, two payments next month?
Okay, so that when the October limit comes, then we just, no other reimbursement of the way is to do that. Okay.
I'll second that. Motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Interfund transfer bill list and payroll, treasurer.
All right. Fine. Yep. Okay, we have general fund bank account list of bills. And the amount is one hundred and thirty-seven thousand, six hundred and fifty-one dollars and sixty-six cents for the week of July eighteenth of twenty twenty-four. And twenty-two thousand, nine forty-two and twelve cents for the week of July twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four. Any questions from either one of those lists? Seeing none, I'm making a motion to approve.
I'll second that. Motion and second. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And we have a capital reserve fund list of bills in the amount of twelve hundred, twelve dollars and thirty-nine cents for the week of July twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four. Any questions on that? Seeing none, I make a motion to approve.
I'll second that. Motion and second. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And we have a hydrant fund list of bills in the amount of sixteen thousand, five hundred and fifteen dollars for the week of July eighteenth of twenty twenty-four. Any questions then? Seeing none, I make a motion to approve.
I'll second that. Motion and second. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
We have electronic payment list of bills for payroll in the amount of ninety-five thousand, six hundred and ninety-one dollars and sixty-five cents for the pay period of July fourteenth, twenty twenty-four to July twenty-seventh of twenty twenty-four. I make a motion to approve.
I'll second that. Motion and second. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And that's a treasurer's report.
Thank you, sure. All right, new business. One thing I want to bring up, I spoke to Chief Savage earlier today. I had told him about the few things we have in the penout back there. Try to clean up house a little bit. There's a, there's a little trailer with a, uh, speed detector on it. And it doesn't work anymore. You can't find parts for it. We had talked about putting on Unisib, maybe somebody has one sitting around that couldn't reach the parts. Uh, he's going to get inventory for me, what's there. There's a whole bunch of old bikes. With the bikes, he said that they were lost and found, so he's got to see how long they've been there. They got reports about them all. So trying to clean up that. The other thing I wanted to talk to you gentlemen about was the S S U, Special Service Unit. That's the big, uh, police vehicle outside. Talking to Chief Savage, the only time they really use it is when they go to the range. We have purchased a second Ford F-150 now. It soon should be getting put into service. It's getting outfitted right now. They don't see a use for that anymore now that we have, uh, trucks. So it might be our time to, uh, cut ties with it. What we do with it, I don't know. I know Chief said that, um, there was interest expressed from, uh, some of the fire companies in the area. Or, um, we can, and, and for, that's for like a fire police vehicle. Or, uh, we can set it, there's no set price, obviously. We haven't talked about that yet. Or we list it on Unisib and whoever wants it can buy it from there. The vehicle is a two thousand eight, I think it was, two thousand eight, um, E three fifty with less than six thousand miles. I think it has five thousand, nine hundred and ten miles on it. So that tells you we bought it new. So that tells you how much we used it. It's, it's sitting out in the weather. I just looked at it today, got a couple pictures on my phone. Just to talk to a friend of mine to see what it's even value at, you know, what the value would even be. And, uh, he's, he's a car dealer and he said they're, they're very unique because each is, they're, it has a box, okay? What kind of box? Well, there's A C in this box, there's cabinets on the inside. You have to find the right buyer that's looking for that. The downfall to it, he said it has a gas engine versus a, the diesel. So, uh, at the, if, if you run it on, uh, Unisib, if there's another, someone out there that specifically wants it, they could turn it into a food truck and they'll pay thirty grand for it. Or it could sell for ten grand. Obviously, we would have to always approve. If we list on Unisib, we're always, market has, the board needs to approve the, the sale of the vehicle because if it brings five grand, I, I, that we're going to get rid of it for five grand.
Right.
But the number he came back at me with, if, if you have to guess, and again, it's a guess, he thinks it will probably bring around fifteen thousand. And, and he noted, and it's so noted here, and perhaps, uh, if we want to try to address this, I can tell Chief or Tommy to, to make a phone call. Uh, he ran a Carfax for me. I think there's a couple of people here that know cars. Back in twenty eighteen or twenty nineteen, I have, I have it in my township email and I can forward it. When the, when the S S U got inspected, the mileage was reported at twenty, twenty-some thousand, they, they, there was an extra two. The last three years, it was reported properly. The Carfax is showing a red flag as a, could be a mileage rollback. I was told by the dealership that if we contact the garage where we get our, uh, vehicle service, they can contact Carfax and get it straightened out that way. So if we were to sell it, I would highly suggest getting that fixed first if we sell it on Unisib. Just because if there's a dealer out there that's wanting this vehicle and they run the Carfax with the VIN number, they don't want to explain to their customer what happened. So that, that's where he said, I, he shoot it towards a fifteen number that it, it might bring. That was something that just was brought to my attention before the meeting, so. Sorry I didn't inform you about that.
So township code says we have to sell on Unisib if we sell the crap.
To the public in general.
Yes, there is a, there is a, there is a side caveat to that, or everyone can call it, we can sell to our buyer departments or.
Buyer departments, not the local department.
Okay. Is there any stipulations to selling it to a buyer department or department is interested in it? We have to segmentize trades and we have to. So I guess we get interest from some. Many of the departments are interested, they could reach out to you. Such as for you, if you're interested in purchasing or if we have to decide if we're going to sell it, when we, what's our plan?
Well, first off, we should decide if we're going to sell it.
It's just sitting there rusting, huh?
Yeah.
It's not rusty, but.
With other pickup trucks now in the force, um, I think it fits that need that that, that truck had. I don't know that we need to keep it. Um, I think I had heard from Chief Savage that, uh, he's all right. Let's see it go.
The, the biggest time they were using it was for the, uh, range and for the Kohl's toy drive when they were going to the hospitals. And when we spoke briefly, he said, you know, about we could rent for fairly cheap a enclosed trailer as well, if you want to tow it with your truck to the hospitals to get the toys. But again, it's, uh, sixty dollars or whatever it costs to rent a trailer versus insurance and registration and all that on a heavy vehicle outside that might get a hundred dollars a year.
I, I think it makes sense to, to see it go. So.
My, my suggestion would be if we come up with a price, Tommy can email all three fire companies to see if there's any interest amongst them three. If there's interest amongst all three of them, then we'll have to figure something out. If there's interest from two of them, we'll have to figure that out. If there's interest from one of them, it's easy to sell. But we have to come up with a price.
Or let them come up back to us.
Or they can come up with a price, or my other thought was, you run it on Unisib, see what it does. And, uh, that way you kind of feel out the market, see where it's at. And then you, you can either approve or deny the, uh, the bid.
We're going to put a reserve on it at this point.
Yeah.
Correct, yep.
Can we throw it into our plans? We, we might, can we get offers from the buyer department?
Yeah, that might be the, the, the way to go is table it for the, to the next meeting and have Tommy reach out and see if there's interest in what, uh, what their thoughts are on the price or, or not.
So we just have to manager to send an email to all three fire companies to see if they're interested and put a VIN on the truck if they're interested in purchasing it before it goes to Unisib or whatever else we decide to do it. Fair enough?
All right. Give it off for me.
All right. Yeah, once that is July. Okay, um, I just wanted to finish. Oh, go ahead. Mind your.
I don't know if it's new business, it is kind of old business at the same time, but it's new because we talked about it the last few meetings and it's been brought up. Um, so I wanted to clarify a few things through Matt, not to put you on the spot here, if that's all right. But a few months ago, maybe longer than that, you presented why the township ultimately hadn't filed suit. We're getting a lot of questions as to why we filed suit, so I didn't know if you'd be able to re-explain why we were ultimately filed suit regarding the tax collector.
I can do that. The tax collector is an elected official. We tend to talk about the tax collector being the township tax collector. The tax collector is elected to the East Calico taxing district which requires the tax collector to collect the taxes for the township, for the county, and for the school district. Now, in our particular circumstance, there is a years or perhaps even decades old agreement where the tax collector and the school district have agreed that the school district will be the primary collector of the school district taxes. So for the East Calico taxing district. of the school district taxes. So for the East Calico taxing district, the tax collector collects the county and the township real estate taxes and a highway tax and a street lane tax. Um, correct, Tommy? That's, that's, there were other taxes in the, uh, the, uh, the, uh, the, uh.
Local services.
Local services, we knew that. But as the, uh, elected official, this board has no authority over the tax collector. This board has certain responsibilities towards providing some financial, uh, support, uh, for the tax collector, but no authority over the tax collector. With, uh, the problems that were experienced in the twenty twenty-two, uh, tax filings where, uh, they were, um, mailed late and ultimately incorrectly, uh, through that mailing had been incorrect. Discount periods as a consequence of the date. Um, there was significant concerns about the twenty twenty-four tax, uh, uh, mailings. Uh, starting in November, in before November, when the tax rolls came out, uh, coordinating, uh, the, uh, provision of information to the contracted, uh, entity that compiles the bills, prints them, mails them. Um, uh, with getting no, uh, uh, responses from the tax collector, uh, the township undertook all of the work, uh, to complete the tax bills for twenty twenty-four. They were mailed on time only because township staff did the work of the tax collector. Uh, at the time, uh, the, uh, township, again, the public doesn't understand that the township has no authority over the tax collector. Uh, was getting complaints of that, inquiries, uh, phone calls, emails were not getting a response. Certifications of the taxes, questions about the taxes were going unanswered. Uh, the tax collector's mailbox here at the township was full to the point that no new mail could be put into it. And at that, uh, point, uh, we as the solicitor were asked what are the choices available to the township board supervisors? Uh, and the choices were only two. We could ask the General Assembly to begin impeachment proceedings against the elected tax collector, or we could seek, uh, authority of the court, uh, as the only other governmental entity with any authority over the tax collector through a mandamus action. A mandamus action is a request for the court to order an elected official, among other things, but in this case, to, uh, have the court order an elected official to perform that elected official's non-discretionary acts. In this case, bill the taxes, collect the taxes, transmit the taxes to the county and to the township. Um, our recommendation was that a mandamus action is the more appropriate choice. Uh, and that we placed the court in a position over the tax collector, uh, to require the tax collector to do what the tax collector is required to do. Um, we are in that mandamus proceeding. We have a status conference with the judge, second status conference with the judge. Um, more or less in an effort to have the judge informally mediate between the tax collector and the township, some sort of resolution. Uh, we have an order, um, that, uh, to date, uh, the tax collector has not complied with that order. Uh, so we'll go back to the status conference, uh, where we ask the judge to inquire why we don't have complaints.
Okay. Thank you for that update.
Okay. Okay. Well, different. Uh, last week I had pleasure attending a roundtable breakfast of the Lancaster Clean Water Partners. Uh, that's a, a group of municipal officials, managers, uh, elected officials, um, from the county. Talking about MS four requirements as well as, um, you know, other general, uh, concerns with, with Clean Water. You know, it, it was, uh, informational for me. I gathered quite a few points out of that that I was not aware of. There's, uh, the borough manager from Corryville was there. Uh, we started talking about MS four and he said, well, we, we don't have that requirement down there. Um, yeah, yeah, okay. And, uh, other municipalities there in the southern end don't have that requirement yet. Um, you know, we, we talked about some of the, uh, our FS four plan and, um, how it has been effective in, um, reducing sediment from, uh, leaving farm properties and, and the borough manager said, yeah, we had to set, uh, our public works out to straighten blood off the wood recently. So, you know, it, it struck me a little bit that we're doing a lot of good things here in, in the township with our program and, and, um, you know, there's other areas in the county that don't have that requirement and they're not getting those results. So, um, you know, and the mayor from Columbia, he, he kind of leads the group and he was talking once again how, uh, the MS four requirements of Columbia Borough are a recurring six-figure theme every year. And they struggle to find projects to, to meet the requirements. And there was, uh, talk about, uh, you know, municipalities working together and joint projects to meet those requirements. So, uh, I thought it was, it was very productive in a lot of ways. One of the county commissioners was there as well. Uh, so, uh, just wanted to fill, fill you guys in a little bit on some of what was discussed there. And, and once again, while, while our reporter's here, let me reiterate about the, the Eagle Scout project that, um, I was able to attend with Lorraine Culp from the rec board. Uh, I'm still so impressed with that young man, how he raised over twenty thousand dollars to, um, put new basketball hoops and fence and other amenities over at the, the Reamstown Pool Park. What a, what a great family and young man they raised there. I can't say nothing good things about him. So.
All right. Moving on to old business, uh, I wanted just to announce a reminder, National Light Out is this August sixth, this coming Tuesday, six to nine, at the, uh, Reamstown Memorial Park, six to nine. Uh, food, ice cream, dump tank, pool riding, and, uh, anything else you want to add there?
They're gonna do a, an accident reconstruction, um, a mock DUI. So they'll be there for that. Fire department and the police department.
I think the fire departments will be there with their apparatus again.
Correct.
And the ladder trucks and all those good things that the kids like doing. So it'll be nice for everyone to get out and, uh, talk to your first responders.
I think Officer Sol, uh, said that he would be getting in the dump tank that night.
I did that last year.
Chief Savage actually said we're gonna try and get you in.
Oh, wow.
Probably need a crane to get him up there. You good? You got anything?
Yeah.
Oh, you got some?
We've been talking about it for months. I've been meeting with the fire, different fire departments. We had a joint, we'll say Calico School District meeting of all the chiefs and some officers from each department. And it was very, very successful. I learned a lot. Um, the team that we have and the leaders that we have at all of our fire departments, not just our three, but outside of our three as well, it's just a second to none. I can't thank those guys enough for everything they do. I've talked a lot about the woes that we're seeing here in the near future with a lot of our departments, whether it's, it's all money and personnel. It's all money and personnel. And, uh, we all know that Reamstown and Smokes Town currently are going through the process of merging and coming together as one. Uh, there's a lot of, there's a lot of pride, dedication, honor, commitment to each department. And, uh, I'm not negating any of that, um, by saying that, you know, by saying Stevens is not part of that merger. Um, there was a, there is a request out there, um, to make it easier with this merged department that numbers change from a comms perspective, from a communications perspective, from Reamstown and Smokes Town maintaining the seventeen designation so that they can get their chiefs. If I'm wrong, somebody chime in for the departments, but make it a little bit easier for the departments from a comms perspective. Right now it's seventeen one, seventeen two, seventeen three. Stevens is seventeen three. Uh, there's communication between the departments, between the chiefs, trying to have the new department maintain the seventeen number and Stevens to find a new number. County comms has supplied new numbers to Stevens and obviously because of that pride and that commitment and the, you know, and the ownership of that, some, some hard feelings and some tough decisions. And, and again, I'm not against any of those hard decisions that have to be made. I actually commend Reamstown and, uh, Smokes Town for making those hard decisions, trying to step forward and doing what they're seeing and trying to see over the horizon with money and personnel. And, uh, you know, I commend Stevens for trying to do it on their own and I truly pray and hope that they can do that. An effort to try to make it a little bit easier and cost effective and, and more fluid for the merged department. Um, I'm just presenting, you know, as much as it may hurt Stevens to change the number again. I think they changed to seventeen three somewhere around twenty years ago or so.
No.
Um, they have to have Stevens change again just so that the communication comms and fluidity of the merged department between the merged department and Stevens is consistent with the comms from Lancaster and such. And that's what I'm hearing from different chiefs. Um, and Stevens understands that from my, from my understanding too. They understand why Reamstown and Smokes Town would want to do that. But also there's a certain pride factor and ownership and, and, and of the number. And so it's not easy moving forward with something as, as important as our departments is not easy. Uh, with what we need to do to maintain them, um, because there's, there's a lot of money that's gonna be needed in our departments here soon. And these merged, this merged department is in effort to make sure that we maintain emergency services in East Calico Township. And there's a lot of foresight that's going into this, trying to maintain that for the next ten, fifteen, twenty years, irregardless of where we're at, you know, as a country economically and such. So with all of that being said, there was a request, uh, to the board, to me that I'm presenting to the board, to write a letter to the comms of Lancaster County to, uh, change the number of Stevens from a fluidity and communication standpoint that would make it easier, more cost effective, re-tagging trucks within the merged department to Stevens trucks. And again, I understand that's a hard thing for our Stevens department. I have no doubt. I see a seventeen three shirt right here. So I know that's not an easy thing. But if we're trying to, to plan for the future and move forward, you know, personal differences aside, I think that's probably the best and maybe we can speak to some of the other chiefs that are here. But that, to my knowledge and what I've been told, it's more fluid and easier for the new, for the new merged department to maintain the seventeen number and to have Stevens change their number to one of the other ones that were given to them by county comms. So I understand that's hard, but he was a young man. So I'm gonna throw that out to you guys to understand what I'm doing with that. To the best of my knowledge and, and, uh, communication.
Yeah, I, I guess I said something to Donnie earlier and maybe you'd like to, like to repeat it a little bit that, um, you know, currently there's a seventeen one, a two and a three. And, um, you know, why is it that we have to get rid of a one and a three? Um, why can't they stay there? Just the two goes in emergency. But that number's just stayed in place?
It was county, the three chiefs met with county, uh, representative of county.
Do you mind coming forward?
Oh, okay. Um, and it was their recommendation to do that because the, in the new structure, a new company, the chief and deputy chief are gonna be chief seventeen, deputy seventeen. And then our assistant chiefs are gonna be, whether it's chief seventeen one and seventeen two or assistant seventeen one and seventeen two. Um, the thought process was on any type of larger incident and Stevens, it's Stevens' call. You know, their chief, which would be chief seventeen three, would have to be the commander of that incident. But they're afraid, okay, there are people outside the township, departments and stuff, may not understand. Uh, Jason, the chief now could be the commanding officer at that call. But when the new officers of the new department show up, the chief and deputy, you say, you know, it just, it turned into some legality stuff. If something goes wrong and stuff, that was part of the issue the township, or the county had. Um, on a, about less than fif, about fifteen years ago, when county put out that we all had to change the numbers, us and Stevens had to change. Smokes Town was one eleven, Stevens was one ten. The new system they put in, it didn't fit in, so it, and at that time, when we sat down together, we decided to go with seventeen number because Reamstown was one seven and they're gonna give the seventeen. And the reason why we did that was in hopes down the road to do a merger. And that's why we went that way. And me personally, Reamstown is the original one seven from back whenever they started that people doing it. Yes. So I feel since Reamstown, that's been Reamstown's number for the last ever hundred years. We should, and if we're a merger, that's, the new companies should be seventeen. But that's just how I feel. But county, they said all three chiefs sat down in county. They two represented out and we went over some stuff. So and it was their recommendation. They, they, their recommendation is either the new company gets a new number or Stevens gets a new number. But, you know, not just money wise, looking at the difference in apparatus, but they have to do a lot more changes in the comm center, which could put, take a lot longer cost more time and money on the county side as well as just us renumbering trucks. So.
So is there, isn't there more than just renumbering trucks, gear, all that?
It's, well, the gear, the gear done by the relief and that's a different, they all have, right now all the gear has seventeen in the back. At East Calico Township, seventeen in the back. That, that, the relief is a different organization, so they have to work all that stuff out. But it's, it's, it's the trucks. It's gonna be the biggest cost, you know, all. And not all the apparatus may not be getting, you know, our tank, Smokes Town's tank is thirty-seven years old. We're probably not gonna renumber that because it's, in the next couple of years, we actually, before the merger talks happened, we had a committee together to replace that. So maybe that might not go. But we're looking at brand, you know, you are rebranding not just the trucks, the buildings. So there's a lot of money that's gonna, you know.
But I guess the merged company will already be doing all that with.
We won't have to.
With a new name, all that's gonna.
The, the new name will have to go on some of the trucks yet. But we're not gonna rebrand all of it. Like, and I can't say without, you know.
It's too early to process.
Yes. Like my feeling is Smokes Town's engine in the front underneath the windshield says Smokes Town. Me personally, yeah, take Smokes Town off the side of the trucks and put the new company name in there. But still put, leave that Smokes Town under the front windshield because that's for that trucker and you can Reamstown it the same way. But I can't sit here and say.
Too early to say.
Yeah, because, um. Because in our, all these meetings, both companies are actually moving only the final figure and done, so. And then we'll know more after that.
But it's quite typical putting us in the middle of this.
Well, it was asked, okay, if Stevens didn't want to do it, county said, well, then the township has to send us a letter. And I was only made of that you guys were aware just the other day, so...
So the township has to send a letter for what?
To recommend that Stevens gets their number changed.
If that's what you choose.
If that's what you choose to do.
Or the new company. But you just said earlier that three chiefs met with county.
Yes.
Was there agreement there?
It was, it was discussed and Jason took it back to meeting Stevens, I guess, and Stevens decided what, I believe they decided not to, that they didn't want to change their number. I don't know why, you know, I don't know, I just...
Well, this is meeting, so that's why I'm asking, so me too.
You heard, um... But I'm just, I know county just said, question was asked, if Stevens chooses not to do it and the new company doesn't want to change, what steps do we need to take? They said the township just sent a letter and, you know...
Do you want us to flip the coin? Maybe, but putting us in the middle, I don't understand. I'm frustrated. Well, there's one chief here, I had three pumpkins on this stuff, and he probably doesn't even know, oh yeah, you weren't the chief. You kind of know what was said at the meeting. You weren't the messenger.
No.
You were actually there.
Isn't county going to make a decision irrespective of what anybody says?
I, they make it sadly, because that's what we thought, well, and they said they don't want to part. And, because they don't want to be the bad guy.
So they advise you to change it, but they don't want to be a part of it?
Yeah.
They don't want to be the bad guy.
Fifteen years ago, they were the bad guy.
Just like you guys don't want to be the bad guy. You know, and no matter what you say, whether it's your company or Stevens changes numbers, you're going to be the bad, it's only going to be the bad guy.
You're all in my team as a community. We appreciate you all. We're quite a team, no longer replies.
As I've always said, you don't come in to like fire response system because our channel like communications on the mutual aid contract. Now we got a mutual aid contract.
So in the meeting of all the chiefs, Donnie, you were there, and I would say, you know, other than Deborah having to leave for a call, it was pretty much a consensus that understanding was personnel and money.
Yes.
And that's the biggest concern going forward. You know, trucks, tankers, they're all a million dollars now at this point. And an individual company, Smokes Town, Rehims Town, or Stevens, not to know any of the finances of them, but that million dollar nut to crack for any one of those departments, and a lot of these apparatus are getting old, is a very, very big one. And so it was almost without being said that all of the departments, not just East Calico's, realized that something has to change and coming together as a team, you guys are team players and leaders when it comes to fire. And you're team players and leaders when it comes to figuring out the future of your departments. And right now we have, you know, we have a lot of pride and understanding and ownership in these numbers and departments, and I totally understand that. We're going to maintain departments ten years into the future, five years into the future, have to figure out something now. And this is just a number. I, you know, to me, I don't understand the fireside and why numbers matter. I mean, obviously I understand the ownership of it, you know. I, I'm just trying to do my best to make sure that we have fire services in ten years from now.
Just a couple of number things. Because of the whole switching the insurance company beginning of the year, I had to go and get a price with our engine we bought in two thousand eighteen at a hundred, six hundred and eighty thousand dollars with cost today to replace it. It was almost one point three billion. That's how much our cost is going up. But other thing is, and you're going to be presenting this more officially, but county is going to phase two the radio program. So between the three fire companies, and the police department's going to have to be part of this too, but we're going to have over sixty radios immediately replaced at a couple thousand dollars a pop. The ones we got a few years ago are good, they don't have, but all the rest of them aren't going to be able to go to this phase two system. And that's going to, they're hoping by twenty, twenty twenty-seven that that takes place. So we're going to have to replace sixty some radios at three, four grand a pop by that time.
The ones you just got are only a couple years...
They're good yet. They can just put down on the computer program, but all the initial ones we got when the new system went in, like, same time around, same time we did the numbers, all the B K radios, all had to be replaced. And I talked to Chief Savage and he said, all theirs plus the base unit type, they have to replace for this new system. So that you're talking...
You paid for the grant writer that made most of the cost of the grant to the officials, but then we may not say it here.
So that's just something you're going to be, you know, we want to try to get it in before you guys start doing your budget proposal because we don't want to popularize that over a couple of years to ask for assistance, it is whether there's any fire coming in to help us or not. But it's just, it's a cost of money that we're not going to be able to handle ourselves, unfortunately.
This is by twenty-seven?
Yeah. Phase two by twenty-sevens. And they said that's police department as well, so you're not...
That's our whole county, that's just...
Yeah. Last time we did it, it was a whole, we tried to create a county grant, but we didn't hear much about that this year again for this one.
The whole county switching over things.
Unless they have new radios, they don't have to. Like I said, the ten weeks that we got, twelve, ten weeks we got like four or five years ago, we just had to, they just had to put that on the computer and do something to them and everything would go. But all the rest of them, maybe we won't be able to, aren't going to be able to, unfortunately. I'm bringing up under the work trail. I know there's a couple of residents here for that.
There you are.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I know it's old business.
Ma'am, just a second, we're going to do public comment.
I have a question on the fire company business. My name's Kathy Ainge. I've been with Stevens for the last more than fifty years. Why do we have to change our number if other companies that are already merging have to change everything? They've got to do it anyway, why do we have to do it? And if we have to do it, who's going to pay for it? You guys?
There's a lot of unknowns right now.
It's not quite fair, well, that's the half page because we don't, we have nothing in it.
Like I said, this is the first I'm hearing of it. One of my board members was contacted and he forwarded the email to us and we are talking about it now. So there's no decision being made, there's going to be probably other discussions at a future meeting.
We've been hearing about this a while, we came up with our last fire company, and that was in July.
Lucky you, because this is the first time I heard it.
So it's just, we just, it just isn't quite fair that we have to, we have to put everything out when the other two fire companies are the ones, and they're going to have the expense to change everything anyway. So why should we have to put money out to do something that we're not big on in the first place?
Appreciate your concerns. Thank you. So under old business, we'll get back to that. The work trail, at the last meeting, there was a public meeting, the room was packed over at West Calico. We were all in attendance, a couple of the other board members from around the community as well. I had stood up at the end and said about, there's a lot of people obviously against the work trail taking eminent domain, the property, or discussion went all over the place. And I had said we would have it on the next meeting agenda to vote on it, to see if we want to go forward with it or not. However, since I'm not a part of that work trail committee, I didn't know the ins and outs of getting the grant to pay for the feasible study. We can't take action on it right, well, we could take action on it right now, but we could be responsible for paying for the money that would be paying for from the grant. So Tommy's going to check with Mike Teshin from Denver Borough to verify that. If that isn't the case, I would ask it be put on our agenda at the next meeting. If that is the case, that we have to wait to get the result back from the feasible study of the work trail, it could be in October. So we would have to wait for that to come in, to actually say, okay, this is feasible, it's not feasible, and then we would take a final vote there and then on the work trail. But I think our community knows where this board stands from comments made at other meetings. So I can speak on behalf of myself. I don't think you have anything to worry about on my standpoint. I made myself clear at the work trail meeting, and I think my board member did kind of the same there as well. So that's where we're at. We didn't forget about it, we didn't not put it on the agenda intentionally to backdoor anybody. That's, it's a process, and that's why I wanted to address it at this time. Do you guys want to add anything?
So what you're saying is the money is spent, and if we cancel it now, we won't get, it's a possibility we won't get the grant, which means we have to pay...
We in the other municipalities, boroughs, might have to pay for that, to pay for the feasibility study. Tommy's got to verify because Mike had to check on a few things, but he's got to verify that.
For those that don't know, the word, it's the rails to trail, it's not really rail to rail.
We're at that for a real...
Yeah, thank you.
We're at that for a real...
I guess I just, we'll add to that just a little bit. I was there to hear the presentation from the consultants as well, and was a little disappointed in how they've approached this. You know, this isn't the first study they've made, they've done this in multiple municipalities. And, you know, I thought they should have had a little better feeling of how to advertise this, and the questionnaires that were sent out just seemed like it wasn't done in a real professional manner. So, but yeah, I don't want to see this grant jeopardized. You know, and if that means it has to be a final report drawn up before that, that's good, and then we'll look at that, we have a comment at that point.
All right. Moving on to public comment, a five minute per person limit for comment on non-agenda items, please come forward, state your name for the meeting minutes.
Sue Matt, just a couple quick questions. The bridge on South Rehims Town Road, is that finished?
It is, and the signs are being picked up. That's your next question.
They are all over the place.
They are all over the place, they're not ours, they're the contractor's, which was Brubaker, and they have been contacted.
Okay, thank you. The other question is, we were down at the township this week for recycled tanks, when did you stop giving those in?
We ran out of bags.
Ran out?
Mm-hmm.
Who ran out and stopped? Who made that decision?
I didn't. It weren't covered by a grant, and we were spending a lot of money giving away bags.
We make a lot of money off of recycling, don't we?
Not others, not any of that, no. It's yard based.
There is always, you know, a community give back, I mean, how much do we spend? That's not, this was a surprise because they were always giving in.
Yeah, we have people coming in grabbing two, three, four bundles of bags. These are the bags you can buy at the local hardware store to stuff with leaves. They were covered with a grant.
I thought the recycle, the money you make from recycling...
No, not yard based, so the money we make from recycling, glass, aluminum, cardboard, paper.
What do you do then?
It goes into the general fund budget.
And I'd love to talk to you on zoning sometimes. Everybody has a different thought process on it. Thirty-seven years ago, I did a subdivision, eleven acres, the zoning board right here in the township fought me tooth and nail because we wanted big lots. Lancaster County at that time believed in the highest and best use of land. Dig an acre and jam on as many as you can, jam on dead men. My question here is, think about this, what does that do? What does that do for you as a town? We got our way, I mean, there's four of us on eleven acres over there, and that's what I hate to say it, but the four of us on that side of the street probably paid more tax dollars to the township than the ten on the other side of the street. Do you see what I'm saying? Do you want to provide more housing for everyone? Do you want more kids going to your school? What do you want?
Not that anyone in this community can afford what you have. So you have to have...
That's a good, that's a good point, that's a good point. So that brings me to the people that were here tonight that want seventeen more affordable housing on property that was already zoned for that. Hey, really, what they were doing forty years ago when they did that development, I sold places in there, I understand that. It's nice, it makes sense to allow, what, seventeen more houses? Affordable housing, because you're right, not everybody's going to afford the same thing. But my point with zoning is, say no to seventeen affordable housing, but, you know, are we looking at tax dollars? What do you do with that?
Well, that's a good point. No, 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 I'm still going to stay there a minute, stay there. So, you know, that's a little bit what this board struggles with at times, because we hear from other entities, oh, we need to increase the tax base, got to increase it. And, you know, we saw tax increases from other entities, and that's the message that keeps them in the back of us. And when you look at that zoning map, and that's a firm right there, you know, there's residential properties all over the townships that are undeveloped now, not even talked about. And, you know, where does this community wanting to go? You know, like we've all talked about, there's no, you know, try and find a rental unit in this town.
You can't find them anywhere.
That's, that's true. But yet, you know, you talk about that and you've got a decision coming up in the future, you know, everybody takes it all over the place. You know, Section Eight gets talked about, and, you know, none of us talk about it here, but people go there. So, you know, is that for me?
Who's speaking for me?
Yes, I am.
I watch the clock.
That's all right, but, you know, that's the conflicting stuff that comes up, and I'm all aware, we're not going to make everybody happy. But at the same time, what is the best use for every piece of property on there? You know, that's up for conjecture, it's not in black and white.
I have my opinion on that, I'm sound sure. But I do believe you have to provide, and I think the law says you have to provide affordable housing for everyone.
And what's everyone? You know, there is some of that.
Affordable, I'm thinking all of those.
People have something, there's some confusion out there. I don't think affordable housing's fifteen hundred dollars a month for a one bedroom apartment. Apparently there's people that think that is...
It's the Stevens box, yeah, sorry.
That probably sounds wrong.
Oh, no, that's, I do, I don't think it's, like I said, we could talk about that for a second, that's all.
But you understand what, you know, some of the conjecture...
Oh, I listen, I understand zoning completely, and that map was done to the best of its ability in this time. Things really change in twenty years. And the other thing, and I have to say it, you know, there's people that are fussing about this and that because of rezoning. There's properties... There's properties that was rezoned that shouldn't have been, I think the one you probably, that caught your eye in the middle of nowhere, was a rezoned property. You know, sometimes you just have to say no, but then when it makes sense, like an extension for seventeen more houses or plus do the same thing together.
Makes, makes sense to one person, doesn't make sense to the other.
That's why they make talk with them now.
Yeah, you're right. Thank you.
I want strawberry.
Doug and Ashley, um, I'm probably gonna have a long ride home with my wife tonight. But one thing I wanna talk about real quick, uh, you guys already made the decision to revisit that plan with the trail with the whole home plan. Two months, excuse me. Plan that was put out in nineteen eighty-five, I caution this board to be careful of that, because I know for a fact there's two housing developments that were put on the same year, because I've seen the plans, they haven't been developed. And once this gets out, you're gonna be faced with another issue, that's a whole lot bigger than one, which is okay. Okay? Think about it, you need to know what's going on. And I know I don't expect you guys to look back through forty-year-old plans, but Jeff's the old guy, he's the most mature one here as far as being a senior guy.
He can say the other word on the table.
I don't mean to disrespect him, but anyhow, just, I'm a little disappointed now. The second thing is, uh, the proposed development on Denver Road. Warehouse apartments, da-da-da-da-da. Please make sure, I have the zoning book at home, my own, please make sure that that plan meets every requirement of the flood. Section two thirty. But when I look down through there and I see what they wanna do, there's things that just stand out like a sore tongue. So I love telling you what to do, just please look back.
Well, I, I think we're on the same page there, I, I mentioned it previously, I mean, I think you have time, but it's a good start.
Well, I said, I said it more than Bruce means you gotta well, and that needs protecting more than anything else. I mean, bad water, you're not gonna have anything around it.
And we didn't approve it.
No, I understand that.
We pushed it on to have discussion.
And, and that's what I said, please be aware.
Absolutely.
The, uh, the last comment I have has to do with, uh, the last meeting. Um, I didn't comment on it at that time, because I just wanted to think about it, but I was a little taken aback by the comment that RC made about a conditional offer of employment letter and his locked-out e- email access and his office mailbox. I keep beating this dead horse, I don't mean to do it, but twenty-four years, supervisor meeting that, right? Did not involve sitting supervisor at the end of the year. Never. Now, it wasn't Dan's fault, but Dan should've never, ever, ever been on that decision, because he was not seated on the board. He got a guy thrown out on the night before he got run over by a beer truck. And it wouldn't have mattered. I think it was wrong, I don't know what the intent was, and as far as RC saying that, um, I understood if I remember right, in later in conversation, he said he was told by the manager that his account has been reopened, but yet he couldn't get on it. Now, I know if my email goes down, three days later it goes back up, all the stuff that was sent to me comes back up, whether I asked for it or not. I'm just a little confused as to what happened, really happened, because I think there's more to it than what was said.
Brad?
Thank you. You want me to address this? Because I was not here at the last meeting, but I, of course, read the news article. My understanding of what happened was that RC did not receive the meeting packets at the, that were sent out in December for meetings that were to occur in January. I'm with you there. That's, that's, that's what occurred.
It was, it was after the last meeting of the board for the calendar year, and a matter to be considered after the reorganization.
Right. These were, these were meeting packets for both an executive session and a public session that were sent out after the last meeting of December, on June three, that meetings could be held after the reorganization meeting of January two twenty twenty-four. So they went to supervisors who would be participating in those meetings. Is that simple?
I had no part in the decision.
Nor did I.
Nor did I.
It was just, it was just a, a, a typical administrative distribution.
Right.
Had the manager, I do the laundry.
And I've done it for all of them.
We've done it with our neighbors, we've done it with our roadmaster, our new road director, we've done it with our assistant manager, we've done it with everybody.
And-
And the board has not decided a thing.
No.
We just ratified.
And importantly, there was confidential information in the packet regarding personnel. And as the media desponders saying, that under the sunshine law, there are things that we may discuss in executive session, but we're not required to discuss in executive session. Personnel items is the exception to that. They are mandatory, confidential unless the employee or employer wishes to take it public. So this was limiting the distribution of confidential information sending to elected officials, active planning, community personnel. Is that simple? However, you mischaracterize it, is that sufficient?
I can wait.
Anyone else?
Hi, I'm Brad Irvin, um, do you-
Was, was it worth the wait?
I'm not sure. I apologize if this is redundant, I heard the gentleman talk about development on Denver Road, I heard tell of, uh, government subsidized low-income housing to the tune of two-hundred-and-eight units in seven different buildings. What, is this bad?
No, no, go ahead.
So, A-
I didn't hear this.
I, I didn't hear it.
You didn't hear, oh, come on.
It's all over social media.
It is all over social media, so-
I didn't know. I don't know, I've heard the developer say anything about it.
No. And they're not a nonprofit developer. So in order for there to be tax credits for low-income housing, the developer has to be a nonprofit developer, and they-
I don't know who they are, my, my first question was, is it true? B, where are we with it? And C, what are the chances it's gonna get approved?
So A, A, your first question was-
Is it true?
Is it true?
Yeah.
That it's low-income housing?
That it's, that is a proposal that's been before us.
So it's, it's not a proposal of low-income housing?
It's not.
B, where we're at with it? Like Mr. Mackley said, I think it's on our August fifteenth meeting, there's a meeting that they're gonna come in and do a presentation to try to get the rezoned-
Right, public hearing.
To public hearing, actually.
Here?
Yes. Seven o'clock, August fifteenth, to public hearing. There's a stenographer here, she writes everything anybody says, and there's meeting minutes, everything, all about it. Um, and we have a public discussion on a piece of property, what's being proposed, whether we like it, we don't like it, left, right, up, down, any way you want it.
And you will, you will have the opportunity to comment if you're here.
Yep. And C, what was the last one, sorry?
A, is it true, B, where are we with? I don't even remember. Essentially, is it true, and, like, where are we with it? So on, on August fifteenth, that's when it's all gonna, you're saying it's not low-income housing?
The developer presented-
I, I would like to know what was said, that, that somebody interpreted.
The development, the developer presented it as workforce housing, on paper put it as such. And then it got spun on Facebook into low-income. And workforce housing, so it could go, you know, I think that's a very broad term, like affordable housing.
Well, workforce housing in that context, if that's what was being interpreted, workforce housing in that context was a price point. That they developed the property with amenities that allowed them to market it at a price point where, um, essentially, meaning gray, and gray collar workers come forward. It's like, it's like fifty-five older housing that isn't age restricted, but you design it with certain amenities, but you market it to a fifty-five and older community, so like, you might have two big bedrooms and a small bedroom that is the office space. That's a fifty-five older design. So workforce is a price point, it's not a type of housing.
And you believe they said specifically, they were not looking at Section Eight?
Well, and actually, Section Eight doesn't really exist anymore, no new housing that's being developed under Section Eight. It's, it's called tax credit housing, and- And it is exceedingly difficult to get tax credits. I, I represent, our law firm represents, we, the largest developers of affordable housing in the region. Uh, which includes Preston Tieron, the senior, the, you know, the largest developer of affordable housing in the nation. Uh, and I would know if these people had made an application, because they would be competing with my clients.
Okay. Alright, thank you.
And, and just to add to it, again, real quick, I don't know if you were here to come here in the meeting.
Okay.
So, so you heard me say, when there's a property zoned in a way, this property is zoned high density and mobile home park. So if they come in and say, we wanna put an apartment building, you technically can't say no. What they're gonna be requesting at the, on the fifteenth is, uh, to rezone part of it to light industrial, because they wanted to put a one-hundred-seventy-seven thousand square foot warehouse, and they're gonna also request a, uh-
A tax amendment.
A tax amendment to our zoning map, because instead of going three floors up, they wanted to go five. So there, this board can also say yes or no to either of those things. So we can't say no to an apartment building three floors high, if they, if they, uh, they're not asking for no waivers, do everything exactly how it is, meet all the setbacks from the wellhead protection and the wetlands and all that, we can't say no. Because two thousand and three, when that map got done, that's what that got zoned to. But we can say yes to light, or say no to the project if they don't mean all their waivers, or we can say no to rezoning the, sort of, light industrial, that is. So I hope that answered all your questions.
Absolutely, guys, thank you.
And there's a current copy of the zoning map right there.
Anybody else?
Just one more comment. Uh, real quick, years ago, Chief is, oh no, I haven't been in life, so Chief wasn't here. But years ago, it was given, and we were given information as supervisors, that the cost of police service, residential versus industrial, commercial, all the other areas. For every dollar of tax money you collected from residents who were paying almost a dollar per head for police services. The other side of the coin, because you don't get domestic violence calls at Act and Markes, you know, those type of things. That police service is costing us about sixty cents. Now, those numbers probably change, but I'm just saying, it's, it's a fine line, it's a fine line between housing and the other stuff. You don't wanna leave the place up with houses, because we don't have another cop to do that.
You know, I represent Eastland Peter Township, I tell you, our police are responding to shoplifting complaints at Walmart.
Well, we don't tell them where they're gonna go.
Thanks, sir. Anybody else? Alright.
There you go, one more. Since we've been, Don, Don, you had to gavel me, since we've been talking about email, uh, the past two meetings, RC was talking about it, Doug was talking about it. Is there a process or a guideline as far as email retention, along with when an employee leaves the company, to keep their data?
I, I can't tell you, I can't, I can't tell you what it is, but we are subject to the record retention policies of the Pennsylvania Historical and Museum Commission. We are, yeah.
But the, the question's about the emails?
Yeah. Email storage, saving it, after an employee leaves, you keep that for-
Yeah, a couple of points there. Um, if you conduct township business on a personal device, a personal cell phone, a personal computer at home, it doesn't matter, those records must be retained. Okay. Um, if you're, um, if you're, if you're leaving the employment of the township, um, records, um, any records that would have been deleted are recovered by the township's IT consultant. So for example, we had a couple of people last year, and, um, I directed the IT folks to recover deleted emails. Um, they'll sit in server until they're needed, if there's a like no request, or if there's litigation, they're, they're, they're looking at it. Um, but it's, it's important to do that, because the law requires everything to be insured and taped. So, uh, that, that's how we do it.
Yeah, thank you.
And that applies to all of our records, not just, you have rules about everything.
It's not just employees too, you're just, it's supervisors, tax supervisors, volunteers.
Yeah, everything.
Okay. Alright, uh, our next meeting will be Thursday, August fifteenth, at seven PM here at the Township Building. I'm requesting an executive session, if that's okay, for personnel, and to discuss East Calico Township versus the tax collector to report it. And, uh, and the, uh, East Calico Township versus the lower application made in the zoning hearing board. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and second, all in favor? Aye?
Aye, aye.
Motion carries. Thank you very much, have a great night, it's almost ten.